We'll call the budget workshop to order. Tonight, we have Public Services Department presenting. Who's gonna lead us out? Well, I'm sorry, let's go ahead and we'll do the pledge of prayer. Commissioner Bankson?
Heavenly Father, we thank you once again as we gather here. We ask for your grace and your wisdom, Lord, as we make decisions that affect so many lives. Lord, we thank you that when we ask for wisdom, you grant it from above. So, we thank you, Father, for a congenial time of working together in this city for the common good. We bless your name in Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Edward, you gonna lead us out here?
Yeah, I don't wanna take up any more time than what we have, what we need. So, tonight, you'll, as Public Services, you'll hear from all the Public Services divisions from, we'll start with Facilities, we'll work to Fleet, which is in your, it'll be in your packet, and then we'll move to the Utilities, all the Utility, each division in the Utilities. And then you'll get to see a little bit about the long-term facility plans. Vlad has some slides that will show you what's on the horizon when it comes to utility improvements. And then we'll finish up with sanitation at the end. So, each slide kinda will go through each one of those functions.
All right, Joe, Christopher Foley.
All right, good evening. Joe Christopher Foley, Facilities Administrator. First thing I'll put on that slide there, I wanna explain to you what we're responsible for right now. So, right now, Facilities is managing the maintenance and upkeep of about eighty buildings now with the addition of some of the water and water reclamation facilities. Eight hundred buildings, I'm sorry, eight hundred, not even close. Eighty buildings, about three hundred thousand square feet. We're doing that right now with four employees. One there chose two, and we're going to be requesting to go to five. It is actually, it's four moving to five. One, I myself, I'm coming out of Public Services Administration, the thirty-ten line right now. And Al, one of our Facility Maintenance Worker twos, is currently paid for out of Recreation. He's working with us, he has been since January, I believe. So, he's, we're transferring the funding for him into Public, into Facilities, sorry. So, we'll be adding, requesting to add one full-time employee, which would be a maintenance electrician. That's where our biggest need is right now, is on our electrical and having somebody on staff to support the electrical systems in all of our facilities. When our, so it really, so it shows a hundred eighty-two percent increase, but that's really just real, you know, shifting those two positions around and adding the third. On our O and M, we show a fifty-seven percent increase requested. Hundred thirty thousand additional in professional services. Reason for that is a hundred, I believe it's a hundred fifty thousand total for master planning in the initial architectural and engineering for the Fleet facility that was identified on the CIP a few years ago. I think it was actually supposed to be done this year, that got shifted to next year, but that'll pay for the engineering costs and also include some master planning for the Public Services Campus to, for future expansion down there. And then a portion of that'll also be for the engineering for the museum expansion. So, that museum expansion was not included in the capital. That will come back to you when we have a design with that later on in the year.
Yeah, 'cause we've got some additional money there from, the museum's got money, and we've got some dedicated funding. So, I think out of the general fund, we only need like a third of whatever it's gonna cost, kinda what we're, Edward.
I'm lost on the whole museum expansion. What is that? I saw a hundred twenty K on the budget, but what is that?
You want to answer, or you want me to? Edward, you?
So, one of the things that the museum's been collecting money over the years into what they call a, they had like a building fund. And the city over the years has also collected some funding, some dollars through some sales and books that we had, were referring to them many years ago. And so, between the money they've collected, the money the city's collected, there were two dollars that were allocated for expansion. So, to be able to increase the meeting room.
Or meeting size, so they have some more space in the actual museum, whatever that may be, however we determine, you know, what's the best way to do that. So, that's why, one of the things we have to do is we've gotta have a design, an architecture, we gotta have a design. We also have some improvements that need to be made to the museum. Some issues of the building on the outside need some structural maintenance or improvements. We're gonna try to roll all that together, so that if we do this addition, we also will put the maintenance of the pieces that are on the outside of it. So, this is a project that's been kind of out there, that the monies, our portion's been earmarked. They have money that they have earmarked for expansion to the museum.
Have we been presented that before? Because I'm, it's not, I'm drawing a blank. And the point that I'm asking.
It's years ago, so it's been years, that money's been, they've been collecting that money for many, many years. So, what we have done is, we're gonna have to have a design before we can even make a decision on how, what the expansion's gonna look like, or we have to have some kind of a drawing or rendering that we can use if, you know, when we go forward, if we go forward with the expansion of the museum.
Yeah, 'cause I put a note on here for the museum piece, 'cause a hundred twenty thousand dollars for something that we really haven't gotten too much insight into. And again, I've been asking year over year over year for economic development position, and we don't, and we refuse to fund it. Expenditures like a museum expansion for a hundred twenty K, which ironically enough kind of transports to that funding total, is just kinda coming out of left field for me.
Well, and here's the issue, the funding from a funding standpoint, the funding is, we have funding that's earmarked specifically for that purpose, and they have funding that's earmarked for that purpose. So, the dollars are already designated, already reserved, restricted and earmarked from prior years. And when I say prior years, is, I think it's back as maybe it's fifteen, twelve, fifteen years ago, maybe before that. But there are dollars that they've been collecting over the years, that we've been collecting over the years for that specific purpose. So, again, we'd have to have the, we need the renderings, we need some kind of a drawing so that we can actually put out a bid to get, to see what that would look like. And then over the funding sources that we have available to be able to make that expansion that we would have to use at that time. So, Commissioner, we're not designating that hundred twenty right now. We're just gonna get the design first, so we can see what that's gonna look like, and then we can look at the funding, which they're funding our.
This is a little bit of my frustration. So, last night, we saw stuff that was on the wish list, that was in the budget. Now, we've got the funding sheets, that one twenty K was on the funding sheet proper, and now we're saying it's not in it. So, I'm totally lost.
Well, with the budgets that you have before you, you are seeing the budget requests that have come from the departments, directly from the departments with no changes. So, tonight, as you look through those budgets, you will now see where we've made adjustments or corrections to those budgets. You're getting the raw data, you're seeing the whole package of what's been requested. There's been nothing.
So, this is where it needs to change. I've spent a ton of time looking through these sheets, thinking that this is what is in the budget. And we're gonna say, we're gonna argue whether or not it should stay or not. For me, I, now we're coming fresh with the new presentation, and all the work, all the pre-work, the pre-we work is, to me, it's throwaway.
Well, Commissioner, let me say this, this is a workshop, and we wanna be transparent and give you everything that the department is requesting or asking for. So, this is the workshop, this is not the final, we have two final hearings that come in September. If we took these things out before we had the workshop, you wouldn't see what the departments are asking for, what they're requesting. What are they requesting?
But this is, call it a workshop, but this is the opportunity for everybody, because my expectation is when a budget is presented to this council, whether it's a workshop, or when we're actually setting trim, or setting the final budget, there's been pre-work to say, yep, this is what we feel comfortable asking council for. This workshop should be, okay, this is what comfortable that we're asking council for, here's our wish list, can we move any of the wish list items into the approved, or any of the approved out, so we can get more of the wish list? Now, it feels like, if I'm looking at the funding sheets, and if I'm looking at the presentations that were being showed here, I don't know what's in, what's out, what balances, what's overage, I don't, I don't know. Like, I don't, I don't know.
Well, the sheets you have in front of you are the, it's all the data, it's everything the departments ask for. Tonight, you're hearing presentations where they have come back and said, I need to do the design portion first, so I'm going to take the one twenty out, because I need to do the design first. After the design, then I will come back with the funding, if I need funding for this, for this project or this, whatever that item may be. So, that's what you're seeing tonight. Granted, on Wednesday, the budget that you see Wednesday, we'll have all of the workshop stuff that we've talked about, all these changes and things that we've talked about today will be, there's a budget in your packet for Wednesday that is a balanced budget that includes the items that we've talked about in the workshops. So, the workshop setting is that, that's exactly what it is. It's a workshop that has all of the requests that have come from the department. So, you're seeing everything the department has, what they feel was, should be in, and then you see the changes that they've made after they've had those workshops.
I won't believe about the point, I'm good, thanks.
Can I, just one question regarding the museum, 'cause I know, I've been, I've been here a few years, but where is the museum in the line item in these budgets that you said was always earmarked for the museum?
Commissioner, that will be in your CAFER. The funding that is earmarked in your CAFER, if you look in your CAFER, under your fund balance, you will see a section there that shows dollars that are earmarked for museum.
Oh, okay.
So, those are your dollars that are, that's your cash position, or those are your funds, your fund balance, that you have, that are earmarked for specific purposes.
And Joe, just as, just kind of a rough guess, what do you think will cost just to get the current building up to, you know, the rot and the, you know, reseal and?
Well, we had budgeted, in this current year, we actually had fifteen thousand dollars in the capital budget to repair the rotted wood on the outside of the building. We've decided to hold off on that, expecting that we were going to be doing some expansion next year, so we've held off on that. We could still go back and say, if we're gonna push the expansion down the line or something like that, we could still go back and probably, hopefully, do that, those repairs for about fifteen thousand. The issue with the museum is that the company who built it and designed it is no longer in business, so there's been some challenges there. But we do have money currently in this year's capital budget to do those repairs.
Yeah, 'cause it is a unique building, it's a log building.
Yes, yeah, and there's some damage on at least two sides, probably from some irrigation or possibly some just water, water issues, that site is prone to flooding as well. So, there's some rotten wood on some sections of it that needs to be replaced. But it doesn't make any sense to go ahead and hire somebody to come in and mobilize to do that work, and then hire somebody shortly thereafter to come out and do an expansion on the building. So, we're trying to combine those two things, if it makes sense. And that's what the engineering costs are. The hundred fifty thousand dollars has rolled up in my proposed, my second round budget. A hundred fifty thousand dollars is there for engineering, it's for two things really. It's for Public Services, the design on Charlie's Fleet building, for space planning for the entire campus, for future upgrades that need to be done down there, as well as the engineering services for the museum, if we do take that on. So, that's a rolled up hundred fifty thousand dollars for engineering services in the thirty-one hundred line, so.
I have one request for the museum. Can we get at least six designated parking signs for museum-only place there for them?
I'd have to look at the parking lot, but I think we, one of the things that we'd like to consider is parking on the other side of the building as well. The parking situation is tough there, but yeah, we could, I'll have to look at that. I think you're talking probably about the, on the other side, the exit side, maybe? I think there's some spaces over there.
On the side that faces the police department.
Okay, yeah, the grass lot over on the side there?
There's some.
No, no, there's six parking spots there next to the building, but everybody parks there except for the museum employees. So, we can get designated signs, museum parking only.
Yes, we can take care of that.
Thank you.
We actually have to put some signs down, out there for ADA compliance anyway this year. I'll go ahead and add those to the list when we're getting those signs made.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, and the other thing, so we've increased, or requesting an increase of about twenty-four percent in the repair and maintenance. Can I just take a step back, Commissioner Becker, at your point? I think what you see in front of you may show a total budget of like four million dollars. And so, my current round is like one point six total, so there's been a lot of changes from the very first version to the second, to the second edition of my budget. So, some of these numbers don't make sense, or don't match up what you're seeing there. Just, you know, jump in, and I'll try to answer it best I can.
Yeah, I mean, I've got three primary questions on just this slide. So, first, you know, employee-wise, you're getting some transfers, not necessarily a whole bunch of net new. Do you have the staff that you need to be able to do to handle the facilities backlog that you have?
It's a trick question, I think, but, I mean, I know, you know, it's gonna take some time to get there. I mean, obviously, I know I can't come in here and ask for five additional people. Could I use it? Yeah, sure, I really could, and I think we look at the work order counts and things like that, and taking on additional facilities, yes, and we've had those discussions, a lot of those discussions with Edward and Mayor, we've talked about that at length. So, what we, I think in my initial proposal was I requested, I think, three to get us where I wanna be next year. But one will help, and it'll kind of allow me some more time to really gauge where we're at. I've only been here, I guess, coming up in eight months now, trying to get my, you know, trying to figure out what we have in front of us, and try to figure out where, how we move forward. We've gotten a lot done. Our biggest need probably is the electrician, and we'll have to see where we go after that. But it's hard to answer that question, but yeah, I mean, you see.
Yeah, I get it.
We have a lot of work, and there's a lot of work, a lot of backlog, a lot of, I like to use the word deferred maintenance over the years, there's a lot out there. You know, it's difficult to say, because our work orders really only show things that are actually requested, too. So, there's a lot of things that we see that we really wanna put our hands on and fix, and we just don't have the time. Whether it's, you know, really it's, I need more boots on the ground. Today, I was out there with guys hanging new light fixtures. I mean, so it's, you know, it's kinda hard, I'm a very hands-on manager, but we do need more people.
Yeah, and I can appreciate, I mean, whenever I hear the word deferred when it comes to facilities, updates and maintenance, that always, that's code word for, it's gonna be more expensive in the next year, as long as we prolong this, it's just gonna be more expensive. So, I'm looking at your data table there, too. So, you have your request table, but the majority of them look like they're under this not assigned backlog. Why is that?
That, because it pulls the department based on active directory, you know, you're not too guy. So, it pulls it off of the system, so if it doesn't, if it doesn't, if it doesn't match the department up with what IT has in the system, it just puts them in the undesigned category. I could probably drill down on that, if I had more time, I could drill down on that. A lot of those undersigns, I can tell you right now, are fire department. Brian Bowman, for some reason, is not listed in the fire department category. So, his comes in as not assigned in the department name, he puts in almost all the tickets for the fire department.
Right, okay.
Same with recreational, a lot of those are recreation, some of those are automated tasks, like some of our generator maintenance and things like that, are automated tickets that get created.
Yeah, and so, count is interesting, prioritization severity is obviously the key metric that you would need to look at on these numbers, right? And that's the point that I'm making is, staff-wise, you know, my interest from where I'm sitting up here is to make sure that you have the staff to be able to tackle any severity ones, if you wanna call them that, the most severe, most prioritized items within the city.
Yeah, so, one of the things we did request was an HVAC technician, because that is, most of our priority ones are AC-related, especially in critical facilities, like dispatch and, you know, the fire stations. So, we do have one of, well, our Facility Maintenance Coordinator, William, is a licensed HVAC technician, but he's our coordinator as well. So, that's something we've looked at, see if we can leverage his experience and licensing to do that work for us. Could I use an additional person specifically for HVAC? Absolutely. Part of the reason the costs on my forty-six hundred line, the repairs, is higher, even though we, sorry, we shifted some things around. Forty-six hundred still went up, because we included some outsourced HVAC repairs and maintenance, because we're six months behind on our service right now, because we're so overloaded with work orders. So, you know, we're constantly looking at what we need the most. We're spending a lot of overtime, but we also are trying to, you know, we're trying to prioritize the work that comes in. Our current work order system does not, because of the way we receive the tickets, we receive them based on an email, so we don't really prioritize or assign a severity or priority to them. We can, it's just a lot more time-consuming to do that with the software the way it is. I think on our new asset management software, we'll be able to do that a little bit better. But for now, we were just interested in, Rob is a tremendous help getting the system up and running for us. We're just collecting the tickets and closing them out at this point, so that we can count how many work orders we receive.
Okay, one more question on this slide, and then you just said something that, it's on my list, too. So, real quick, on the other, talking about professional services or contractual services, so that line item thirty-one hundred and the ten-twenty-two fund had the Public Safety Administration complex for two million bucks, what is that?
We dropped that down to, it's a hundred fifty thousand total now. So, originally, it was the, all the architectural, I don't know, was it two million? That shouldn't have been two million. Oh, that included, it probably included the actual cost of the, I'm sorry, of the building for Fleet, and that was pulled out, because that was, I believe that's gonna be requested later.
Yeah, I saw a different one for Fleet, I thought that was a million and a half.
Yeah, I think there was one, there was a million dollars that was in there for, yes, that we pulled that out. So, we, you see a hundred fifty, two million and one fifty on yours.
Correct.
We pulled all of those out, and what we did was, we have just a single line now for a hundred fifty thousand for architectural and engineering services. For Public Services, for the, basically, a mini master plan for the campus to identify our biggest needs down there. Fleet, obviously, with their new building, that's pretty been approved. The new build, they're a larger facility, and sanitation and streets also have some other needs. So, we'll be identifying those, and then beginning the design of the Fleet facility that needs to be built down there.
Okay.
And then whatever's left over will be also for the museum expansion, for the engineering on that.
Got it. And the last question I had for Facilities, I promise, unless something else sparks my interest, the asset management software, you know, I was very particular about this last year, because it was a very large allocation of fund. Is this because we didn't spend some of that last year, because another a hundred K plus? Because there was some federated across multiple departments, and this line, or this fund alone, it's a hundred thousand? I'm just trying to, I'm trying to reconcile why this software costs so much.
Vlad's hitting that one up, and he can probably answer that one.
Has that been moved actually from the, from the line?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I mean, if you're saying it's removed, and I just shouldn't worry about it, then I'm not gonna waste time.
For the next year, it's removed, because the contract's gonna start over first, so we're gonna roll over, and then make the following year, twenty-two, twenty-three, we'll have it again for subscription, just for the annual subscription.
Yeah, you're referring to the hundred thousands in the budget you see there in front of you, that was pulled out, because that's, or like Vlad said, we're going to be completing that soon and rolling that over into next year. The money that's already allocated in this current year's capital budget will be used to fund that for next year. That was a placeholder that we put in there in the initial first submission of our budget. So, that's coming in.
So, now, I'm totally confused. So, what we're being presented here, what's in and what's out? I mean.
What you have in front of you is the first submission that we submitted, and then when we made our changes, so that's what I've gotten, that's what the percentages are based up here, and I can send you that if you need it, but.
Yeah, I think that.
So, I'm looking at this, and then what's on the laptop, some of those line items have been removed?
Yes, a lot, and I can, I can send you the second round that I have, there's a lot of things crossed out.
Yeah, because then why go into discussion for what's been removed?
So, Commissioners, what you have before you is the original budgets that were submitted for the workshops. We did not take anything out, we showed you everything transparent, there it all is. Then, so we have the workshops, so the departments have done their presentations, we've met with them, they've done their presentations. You needed to see, I wanted you to see everything that was requested. Everything that the departments are asking for is there. They're coming tonight and telling you that after we've met, this is, for example, the three million dollars for the building, done at Fleet and Museum. We don't know what that number's gonna be, and we don't even know how we're even gonna do it yet. We need to get the design first, which is what we're putting in now, the hundred fifty thousand, to get the design. When the design comes back, which he's making, so he's telling you, we're taking out the construction, 'cause they thought they were gonna put, the department wanted to put all the construction and all of it in one. Well, you can't, you can't put the cart before the horse. We need to find out first what we're gonna build, before we tie up all those dollars, so we can use those dollars in other places in the meantime. But they're gonna, so they have the design, they're telling you to take the, he's taking the two million out, the one point five out, leaving the hundred and fifty to do the design. And then, once the design's done, it'll come back to you, because you have to figure out how we're gonna fund those improvements.
I know, but this, this sort of stuff, that conversation should have died in committee. I mean, you're presenting it, you've given us all stuff to study prior to these workshops, and we've spent time going line by line. And on some of these funds, they've been stricken through and said administrative cut. So, my assumption is, when you're going through these fund by fund, there's been conversation to say, should we put this in front of council? And if it's stuff, I mean, two point three million dollars is a lot of money for us to sit there and me thinking, doing a lot of analysis to say, you know, can we, what's more priority? This thing, or the fire thing, or the police thing? Now, it just, like, I can't, and no offense, this is a good presentation, but for me to see the line item contractual services, and to say that it's a seventy percent increase and it's a hundred twenty-five thousand over, I don't know what makes that up.
Well, Commissioners, here's what we've done. So, you have the workshops, and you have all the data from the workshops. You have the workshops, the budgets, the departments are preparing their budgets, and they're telling you what, they put everything in, now they're telling you, you know, what I need, what I need to do first, what I'd like to have, what I wanna change, whatever, from that point to this point. Wednesday night, in your packet for Wednesday night's council meeting, you have the adopted budget that reflects all of what you're seeing here tonight.
I disagree with that, because we have budget workshops until the meeting. How are you gonna insert all the stuff that we talk about tomorrow into a presentation that we're supposed to then vote on?
Because the stuff that they're going over with you tonight is the stuff that we, that Mayor and I have sat down with them and have gone over and made their changes. So, you're seeing the, all of the big picture of what they want, then you're seeing the stuff that we've taken out, or the stuff that we've adjusted, that they're explaining to you why we did those adjustments. And then your Wednesday will be the final that has everything. And Wednesday, when I go over the budget, I will report back to them. We took that out, it's a hundred and fifty now, based on your workshop presentation. Now, things that come out of the workshop, if you tell me, add this back, put that back, I wanna see this, let's look at this, those will be items that at the workshop, I mean, at the, when we set the proposed budget, that we will have to make adjustments to on that, on Wednesday night. So, you know, and I want, and we did this this year, because last year, we heard that you guys wanted to see all of the data that the departments were asking for. So, we're giving you everything they asked for before we've adjusted them. You wanted that, you wanted to see everything before, that they submitted from the departments, directly from the departments, before the adjustments were made.
I know, but again, I use this slide as an example. If I, if I tried to say, for me, for me to feel comfortable saying, yep, I agree on line for budget ten-twenty-two for funds thirty-one hundred, you've got titles there, professional services, repair and maintenance, contractual services, but how am I supposed to know which ones made the cut? With the information that I have in hand right now? Because we could all head nod and say, yep, we agree with that, but what are we agreeing to? We have no idea.
You are agreeing, well, in the workshops, we're not really agreeing to anything. The workshop is a workshop. But what you have is, you have the raw data before you. He's, each one of the managers is making the adjustments, telling you what they're taking out. Those are the adjustments that have been made for your final packet on Wednesday.
Commissioner, if it helps you, I can go through and kinda highlight some of the big items that I took out. I do have in front of me, I have my copies that I've stricken out, what we've taken out, if that helps you, if there's some major things.
I'll wait till the final work product, I'm good.
So, what line item are we on now?
I think we're at repair and maintenance.
Well, when you say, just give me the line item, 'cause that's how I find it here.
On the slide, yeah, the slide there, so I'm at the professional services, we talked about that, repair and maintenance, twenty-four percent increase. Repair and maintenance, really, that one's just electrical improvements that need to be made, some safety issues out there, to rectify some things there and do some lighting protection at some of our locations. And contractual services, seventy percent increase, up a hundred twenty-five thousand. Contractual services, for the most part, covers janitorial services, pest control, our alarm systems, and our generator services, our scheduled services for generators. And one other note before I go to the next slide is, one of the things, you'll see there's a lot of, you know, increases and shift, there's a lot of things that have been shifted around, so you put those in the correct line. A lot of our contract services were not in contractual services, a lot of our contract services were in forty-six hundred. So, things have been shifted around quite a bit. And they've also, as we've taken on overseeing the maintenance on all the, on a lot of these other facilities, like Recreation, we've tried to pull in some of those maintenance lines from the other departments forty-six hundred lines. We've pulled those, those costs into the ten-twenty-two forty-six hundred line. So, that's why a lot of these numbers look like they go way up. It's really that we've pulled in from, you know, from Recreation or Police and Fire. We've taken some of the money that they were spending within their department, pulled those in, since we're now managing that work, we've taken on some of those, some of that money from those departments.
When you said you took money from Fire and Police, or they specified that?
They've shifted over the responsibility for some things in their budget, so some of the maintenance costs that they were incurring or budgeting for, they've, we've allocated, we've. allocated, we've, we've considered those costs when we've, when we've completed our detailed spreadsheet here. So when you look at, at the spreadsheet, for example, if you look at like the forty-six hundred line, you'll see things like, I was going to pull an example here, you know, Kitland Nelson gazebo lighting. And so we've, that normal, that may, in the past, may have actually been budgeted in, in one of the recreation forty-six hundred lines. That's now in this, in this budget. So it would, you know, would not be in theirs this year. So that's why a lot of our costs look like they go way up. It's that we've pulled in a lot of those specific, those named projects especially, pulled in some of those things into the ten twenty-two line. The ones where those don't, that doesn't really apply is specifically like public, public services projects, and you'll see some of those later. But some of the costs at public services facilities will stay in, in their, in their accounts or in their lines because it comes out of those, that fund. General fund is where we typically have shifted those things over. On the capital, we'll see a three hundred eighty-three thousand dollar budget for, for capital. Some of the items on the capital budget we've identified, the resurfacing of city hall, ninety thousand dollars that will fix the, the pothole ridden parking lot here in the, on the back on the east side and seal coat or reseal the front parking lot. And it'll include all the restriping necessary down here. We've held off on the restriping this year, even though I would like to get done. We've held off on that because we need to reseal and repave part of the lot. So that'll be, that'll be done next year. Renovation in here, thirty-two thousand dollars, a big portion of that is the paint with the failing paint and ceiling in, in this room right here, the large chunk right above my head here. We're going to go ahead and repaint this room and also fix some of the lighting issues we have in here and electrical issues. Fire department, training site, gate, automatic gate and some lighting upgrades down there for security. Kitchen hood suppression systems in some of our, our buildings, I think it's four different buildings, and including a automatic accessible door at Billy Dean.
Do you know, that, that one was interesting because we just built Billy Dean. That was never...
It was not included in the original building.
It was not included, so it's costing us more because we didn't include it.
It probably would have cost the same amount back then, but now we've made, we've, we've made it a point to go ahead and install these automatic doors at, at most of our facilities where, where it's feasible and makes sense to do so. And Billy Dean is next on the list. We'll have, we have, the VFW was installed recently. We have the utility billing office being done this year. And I believe the police department, if I remember correctly, will be done this, this year still. Billy Dean's next on the list and public services as well.
So, wait a minute. The police department, utility building, the VFW said...
VFW is already done.
I saw that. Utility building?
Utility billing, the, the customer service area of utility billing will get the automatic door here in the next two months and...
The police department?
And the police department lobby, yes.
So they're all on the list?
They're on the list this year. They were actually, different buildings were on the list that was approved during the budget last year. We've, we've shifted a few of those priorities around. Fire admin was on that list. However, the fire department is now locked during the day. It's, they buzz people in as needed for security reasons over there. So that one didn't make any sense to put an automatic door there if the door remains locked. And they have a doorbell and they can open the door for somebody if needed. The police department's a very high traffic facility. So that's on the list to get the, the opener this year. We shifted that around. And the recreation up at northwest, the office building was going to get an automatic door. However, it's not really wheelchair, it's, it's wheelchair accessible, but the, the getting up to that door is not, it's not, there's not a lot of traffic there and they keep that locked as well. But it's also difficult to get a wheelchair up to that door anyway. So we decided to, to hold off on that one this year and push that, push that down the list.
Okay.
And then for equipment, we, and this is something I mentioned back in January, if you remember my presentation back in January, we, we upped our number of air conditioner, basically planned replacements of air conditioning units to seven per year. Basically puts us on a fifteen to sixteen year lifespan per unit, which is still higher than what we would like to see. We do, you know, typically it's about a twelve year lifespan. But that gets us more. We only had two budgeted for this year. We've already done four and we need, we have another one down today, actually. So we, we need to be doing at least seven a year. So we've requested fifty-five thousand dollars per year to do that. Eventually I'd like to get that other, that number up to about ten per year, but we'll start at seven. And then new, new vehicle for the electric, maintenance electrician that we requested, bucket truck for the maintenance electrician. So we can be doing our parking lot lighting and, and things like that. And then a, one new vehicle to replace one of the oldest ones we have in our fleet, I believe it was a two thousand and eight truck that we got, you know, that, that transferred with Al from when he was over in recreation. He, he brought that truck over with him. So that'll be replacing his and put him into something that's much more, much more efficient for our techs. Our techs are mainly working out of pickup trucks, which doesn't really, doesn't make sense. They'll get him into a truck, which you kind of can see there, a service body truck with a, with a shell on it that actually can be used for our maintenance tech. Where we can store tools in it properly and things like that. And then one ice machine. So overall, it's a ninety-one percent budget increase. But again, a lot of those things are just shifting, shifting the numbers around. But yes, we are requesting more, more money to, to keep up with our buildings. And Commissioner Becker, to your point, I mean, staffing wise, I'd love to have a few more people, but this is what we think we can do. We can, the one, one person will help. We can, we can get these things done that we have budget, that we're asking for here in the budget. You know, it won't be the last time I ask for any more help, though. I'll, I'll be asking more.
Yeah, I mean, it's always, yeah, you always want to say that you want your desired state. But is, you know, my, my thing is always, if you can tackle the high severity, high priority issues within the team that you have assembled, that's, and if you're heading, shaking your head yes, that you're able to do that, then I have to trust your judgment.
Yeah, we, we have a good, we have a really good team. We do a lot. We're, you know, we're jacks-of-all-trades, you know, kind of guys. We, you know, again, I'm hands-on when I need to be. An electrician is our biggest priority, I think. We outsource nearly everything we do or we do it in-house and, you know, kind of push, push the limits a little bit sometimes there. But we, you know, we, we do a lot. The electrician, I, I think is our biggest need. Like I said, a close second would be the HVAC technician, you know, and...
Yeah, I, as I'm thinking about it, I think employees at the city are concerned about the three F's, right? It's financial, it's facilities, it's fleet, especially with some of the jobs that we have. Job satisfaction or, or work quality is probably directly associated to all three of those things, right? So how much you get paid from a financial standpoint. But the facilities that you work in every single day, day in, day out, making sure that that's a, a healthy work environment to work in as well. And then the fleet, which we'll hear next, you know, for police or fire, whomever, you know, all these maintenance workers, public services. So making sure that all of that stuff kind of works in concert.
Yeah, we think we, we, we work very hard to provide all of our employees and, and in turn, the public, a, a very, you know, the best building we can and the best facilities we can. So we're, and you see, you see us out all the time, you know, after hours at night, you know, whatever the event may be, where we do our best with what we have to, to provide those, those services for our employees. So I think we're doing a lot better than we, we have in the past. We still have a lot of room to go. But I think this, you know, what I've presented to you here tonight, I think this will get us, you know, continuing to move forward.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it.
All right, sir.
Well, let me ask, is the one employee that you're requesting, is that in the budget?
Yes.
Yes, the electrician is funded.
And bottom line, ten twenty-two, what we have is a four hundred nineteen point eighty-one percent increase and that is now the ninety-one percent. So that's been pared down to ninety-one. Is that...
Correct. That's correct.
And part of that is attrition from other departments.
Yes.
Okay.
Adding a lot of money to finance, I return facilities as well. So we're shifting costs, but we've also put a big chunk of money in facilities that, that...
No, I'm, I'm good.
And one other question. I know there's backlog. We've been making progress and at this rate with one additional, we will be continuing to make progress.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Who is our one electrician on?
We don't have, that's the requesting that we're asking, we're requesting one.
Oh, we never had one?
Not in facilities. What are, what are recommendations? Glenn's group has electricians. They're industrial electricians for, for their side. But we do not have an electrician on staff for facilities.
Okay.
William and I are electricians.
I was going to say, I always see William.
William and I, yeah, William and I were doing new LED light fixtures in, in Fire Station One this morning. So, yes, we, we do a lot in-house where we can, but we, we need a full-time electrician. We, we outsource where we have to, we in-source where we can. But we, we need somebody full-time with the amount of, the backlog of work and the, the safety and, and the reliability of our systems. We, we need somebody on staff. And that person will still be able to help us with other projects. But we, we certainly, that, that is our priority one right now.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. All right, Mr. Coffee Man, Charles, come on up.
Okay, so now this one is...
Good evening. Charles Stevenson, Fleet Superintendent. And my budget's pretty flat this year. Y'all gave me what I needed last year. Thank y'all for that. Got a new service truck. Right now, we got two facility building, two fleet buildings that are pretty tight. So we are, I asked last year and this year, moved over to get it into the planning on their facilities. So as you look at the budget, you see I put one point five. That was just a guesstimation. I'm not an engineer by no means. So I just threw a number in there. I know it may be high, it may be low, but I'm still asking. So, and the mayor gets hit with it every morning.
And then what, I guess, just tell them, so we're talking about then is turning your two buildings over to, to sanitation.
Sanitation or the streets and sanitation. That way they're, they're utilized, recycled.
As we're trying to do this, kind of, we got to get the whole master plan together. So we, you know, we don't want to just do haphazardly building. We want to make sure they all kind of flow. And I know, well, he'll talk about, you know, some of the cleaning stations and all. But, yeah, so anyway, Charles done a great job for us. And what you got?
Right now, fleet, we are thirteen full-time employees, taking care of around fourteen hundred and fifty pieces of city equipment. And that goes anywhere from fire, police, regular public services, all the way down to the weed eaters, lawnmowers. We take care of everything. And pretty much, the overall budget has decreased. The vehicle maintenance has gone down because of the new vehicles. The, we got rid of the nineteen ninety Dodge and have replaced it with a twenty sixteen Ram fifty-five hundred. I don't know how to move this thing. There we go. Now you can see it. There's the brand new service truck right there, four-wheel drive. So now we can actually go out on the construction sites, things like that, that we need to repair anything on-site without having to run back to the shop every time. Utility services have pretty much gone up eleven percent. That's just the cost of electricity and water. And the operating supplies, we've gone down. Don't need quite as much due to the fact that we don't have to run back and forth with the fuel and the, the gas and diesel that we have. The vehicle maintenance is, has decreased substantially due to the new vehicles that are purchased. And of course, you see the building on the side that we'd like to have, but I still, I still hit the mayor on it. But that's pretty much all that, that fleet has, pretty much, um, flat budget this year.
But you'll pick up a little bit of time by, when we get rid of the airport. I mean, I know you spend a lot of time out there, but you spent time out there keeping our gas pump running. So we get rid of that, that'll give you some...
And we do have a, a full-time employee that runs back and forth to the airport maintaining that.
So that'll, that'd get free up that person to do more.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Didn't we sell it already? So we still have an employee going up there?
We're still working out the contract, Commissioners. So when we get the contract worked out, we'll bring that back to you.
You're kidding?
Still working it out.
So we still have the airport then?
Correct. We're still, it's still, yes, we are still maintaining it.
Oh, okay.
Till we close.
Any other questions?
Do you have any idea what it's going to cost for the new building on your wish list?
No, sir, I do not. That's why we put the, transferred some of the money request over to facilities to get a design after the master plan of where to put it and the size of the building.
So there, this building's included in that design plan?
Yes, sir.
All right, so.
Mr. Becker?
Uh, good.
Okay. Thank you there, Charles. Appreciate it.
Charles, what's your last name?
Stevenson.
Stevenson?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, it's the first time I'm actually meeting you. So, nice to meet you.
All right, next up, streets. Paul?
Mayor, Commissioners, how are y'all doing today? Good. Um, real quick, like, just go through these things promptly so you keep y'all's time. Um, need to...
Budget line thirty-four.
There we go.
Twelve.
So...
Where was thirty-four, twelve?
Street maintenance, basically evaluating our streets and our roadways. We have a company coming in, IMS, that I think they're going to be in this Friday, and they're going to start evaluating our roads. That's going to be a, a great asset for us because they're not only going to evaluate the roads, they're going to give us an idea of what we're going to need to achieve our final goal is to make the roads usable, tangible and have a long life. So that's going to be a very important...
When are they starting?
Uh, they're going to be here this Friday.
Oh.
So, so will that fifty thousand that's in the budget for this one be triggered this fiscal year?
No, sir, we're, we're, we're pulling that out. We won't need that. We, we won't need that again for another five years. So if, that's, that is if we want them to come back. Right away maintenance is mowing, sweeping, traffic maintenance and traffic sign maintenance. So we have on there. Personnel, we have ten full-time employees. We pulled the sidewalk and curb repair fifty-two oh three out. That's a hundred thousand. But what we're going to do is we're going to reallocate two positions we already have. And we're going to dedicate those to concrete. And what we're going to do is we're going to have them go through the entire city year round. And that's what they're going to do, is they're going to repair our sidewalks, our curbing gutters. And what else is going to happen is when we do our overlays, our, we're going to have to do our ADA repairs on those because that's mandated. So they will work on those. So that's going to save, give us great savings on that, that we can do that in-house. So that's what we're going to work on that. Next one here is, um, utility services, rental agreements, rental and leases. That went up a little bit because railroad leases shot up. So that's, we, we had to adjust to that. Repair and maintenance, we put a little bit of money into that. What we're going to do is we went over to the brick roads and we did a couple of test patterns over there. We pulled some of those bricks up, repaired it to see if, if we can make that work. And it actually turned out pretty good. We did some little ones. We did some larger ones where we went in there and did some tree, roots and stuff of that nature. We put fifty thousand into that and we're going to do that each year and see where we can go with that, how we're going to repair those. Street pavement markings, we put a little bit into that because we're going to start doing a lot more streets. So we're going to have to make sure we go back and, and take care of those.
So this one, so fifteen is the total because that went down from seventy-five?
Yes, sir. We added extra, fifteen thousand extra. That's why I'm asking for it. We had...
So, so it's going to be ninety in the budget? Because in, in the lead-in sheet, it was seventy-five for striping?
Yes, sir. That's, that's what we added too, is seventy-five. It was fifty, no, I'm sorry, it was, yeah, it was fif- sixty, sixty thousand.
Okay.
So we asked for additional fifteen on it. So it'd be seventy all up there. That's what we're asking for.
Yeah, because I, I mean, again, like, if I, I just use this road because I travel it every day, but Lester, I mean, some of the bike paths, striping on those disappeared completely.
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of people that walk and, and bike on that road. It's not lit at night. And to have, and a lot of the reflective, reflectors are gone too. So not only do you have no lines, no reflection and no streetlights, it's just a recipe for disaster. And so I guess my question would be is, is if we have seventy-five K in there, you know, what is, how do I interpret what that covers? Is that...
So right now, for this year, we went through and we're going to have on the twenty-second, they're going to go in and they're going to go through every school. And we're going to make sure we have all the crosswalks, stop bars, everything of that nature needs to be done throughout our schools are going to be done. And then with the leftover money we have, we will go to the streets that needs repair or painted. And then we're going to go until we run out of funding. So that's, that's how we're going to do that. When we go in and we do pave a road, we put in temporary markings, which is paint. So we'll have, eventually have to go back and go in there and re-stripe those to make them a temporary. So that's what those funds are going to be for.
A couple other, I guess, capital type of items. Signalization, Vic and Lester staying in that area. I think the study had suggested a signal at that intersection. Is that out of this fund and is it funded for this next fiscal year? Uh, I think the study had suggested a signal at that intersection, is that out of this fund, and is it funded for this next fiscal year?
That will be funded in your transportation impact fee funds, so those project funds, that one is funded, and you'll see that in the transportation impact fee fund.
And then the only other signalization that people have at least personally reached out to me concerning is Kelly Park and Jason Dwelly, as the school comes on online.
Yes, that currently Pam brought, um, and I think she brought that to council to add that additional funding for that change order. They are studying and designing that right now.
Okay.
So that will be part of it.
So, um, we have operation supplies, road, road maintenance supplies, uh, streetlights, we added 36% on that. Um, the extra funds will be, uh, put in budget for new streetlights, the funds will be used, uh, in part of a new light installation, a required installation, for example, um, Martin Road and Hawes Road, y'all have some funny names for some of y'all. We'll be, um, are waiting for cost estimates from Dick Energy, and then we will figure out from that which streets we can go through and, and work with, put lights on. Okay, uh, capital outlines, um, road resurfacing, um, we have a, a good amount we're putting in for that, it's 180 or 1.8.
What, what was the call, 'cause in the, in the lead-in packet, it was 800K, what led to the million-dollar increase?
I'm, I'm sorry, what?
The, our lead-in packet had 800,000, I was just curious as to what led to the million-dollar increase, 'cause I guess my question would be, absolutely love it if we can execute on it, but I don't want to encumber a million bucks on something we feel like we can't execute.
Well, the, the reasons why is we have a company come in here that's gonna actually show us where we need to put our money. And, and, and I see this a lot through a lot of different entities, they're gonna throw all their money into resurfacing, 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 and, and they're throwing their, they're throwing their money into good use, but not all of it's in good use, 'cause if you have a chart from 1 to 10, and your 10's your worst roads, and you're throwing all your money into 9s and 10s, you're neglecting the 5s and 6s. And your 5s and 6s, if you take those now, it's pennies on a dollar to keep those roads up and running and lasting you another seven to eight years. And, and hopefully with that kind of funding, that's what we can do, is we can take care of our 9s and 10s, but also go back and concentrate on your 5s and 6s, 'cause that's where your big bank is, you're, you're gonna get your money, you know, for that. So with that, hopefully we can do that.
Commissioner, to your point on the, if you look back in the prior budgets, we've usually, this fund has always struggled, as we all know, with, with gas tax, um, and then the streetlights, as we've talked about, we've made changes to that to help this fund. We've always had about $800,000 that we've put in resurfacing or paving, we've, and then as you can see here, we've, we've injected another $1 million. Those, those dollars are coming from your rescue plan money, so we have taken the 7 million that we were, that we're getting, that we were to plan to get from, from rescue, um, we've received three and a half of it, we've already got our first 50%, we do have that in the bank. So we are taking, um, a million of that and putting it into road resurfacing.
Can we, can we highlight those throughout these presentations, because last time we talked on the subject, we didn't even know what we were able to allocate those funds to.
Well, and this was the last, this, that's another reason why you're seeing it now, you don't see it in that packet, because we had to make, we wanted to make sure we had the dollars, first of all, and then make sure that, that, um, it was a use that we could, you know, that we could do with, we could use it for. So that's why you're not seeing it in your workshop packet, but you're seeing it now, because we, since then, we've received the money, and, um, and there's still guidance coming, so I will tell you, it's still not clear on all of it, but we are comfortable knowing that the 3.5 that we've got, that we've received, we know we had a shortfall in revenue of $3 million in sales tax, so we know that we can use this for, um, makeup of lost revenue, and so we've elected to put $1 million into our road resurfacing, 'cause that's an area where we've, we've struggled, um, funding-wise.
So the 1.8 million is coming out of the American Rescue Plan?
Just a million of it.
Just a million?
The 800 is what we've usually budgeted here from these dollars every year, so we're trying to pump that up to help with our resurfacing program.
So, so on budget approval, I'm assuming you'll have reconciliation of the monies that we received through that act and where they're being allocated throughout our budget?
Correct. And hopefully we'll have more information by then, if we don't, Commissioner, we'll do the best we can, but I want to be careful, make sure we're using those dollars exactly where we can, 'cause we have to file reports every month, and, and we're still, it's still not clear, and I'll be honest with you, every day, try to find out, get an answer. What can I do, what can I do, it's, it's still unclear to everybody, but we do know we're pretty comfortable, we know that we have had a lost revenue, we've had a lost sales tax of $3 million, we've received 3.5 of our 7 million allotment, and we're comfortable enough knowing that this, this is the piece that we can use for, um, to make up for lost revenue, that we want to use, apply it to road resurfacing, 'cause we've heard loud and clear that lighting and road resurfacing are two areas that are critical infrastructure.
So the 3.5 million that they, is there a list of the things that we can spend that money on?
It's very vague, but there is a small list, yes.
I thought we, I thought we was gonna get public input as to how we were gonna spend that money before we started spending it.
The 3.5?
Yes.
I mean, Commissioner, we can, I mean, like I said, we get some more information, we'll be able to maybe share that on how it can be spent, so that we can, you know, it's very vague, like I said, it, it, water sewer, broadband, lost revenue, it's very vague, it doesn't give you exact specifics. So with this, with that being said, we received 3.5, a million of it we've put here to road resurfacing that we're comfortable with, so as, as you know, that leaves 2.5 million that is still earmarked, which we're putting it in a separate fund, so that we're keeping it separate from everything else, um, and then, you know, it'll be at, at the council's discretion on where they spend that 2.5, um, going forward.
And last we're talking about is equipment, uh, we're gonna ask for an asphalt heater, um, that's gonna help us be more efficient, and how that's gonna help us is usually when you have a pothole, you're gonna have to have a crew come out, saw cut it, gonna make the hole bigger, gonna have to take that out, then you have to come back in and replace it with asphalt, you're gonna have to tap it down and wait for it to dry, and then you can leave. With the asphalt heater, you come in, you put it down, you wait seven minutes, it heats the asphalt up towards pliable, you throw a shovel tube mix in to fill up the pothole, you rake it, you roll it, and you're out of there. So instead of having, you know, five to six personnel to, to do the job and multiple equipment, you have three guys working it 15 minutes per pothole, you're out of there, the old-school way, you're looking for 30 to 40 minutes per pothole. So that's gonna make us more efficient, and it's gonna make us to where we have less personnel, so we can do more, more jobs.
Yeah, 'cause, uh, right now, if, if we report potholes, you kinda wait to rent the machine to have so many potholes to fill?
What we do is when we have a pothole, we'll go out and we'll put it with cold, cold patch.
Right.
And then when we have enough, then we'll go out there and we'll square them up, then we'll get our hot patch truck come in, 'cause we have to get at least, you know, three tons, that's why we, we wait to get enough, so we don't waste any mix, and we'll go in there and we'll repair the potholes. I like to get to where, you know, we're trying to do, uh, in-house policy is if we hear of a pothole, we want it repaired and replaced within 24 hours.
Yeah, that's, that's another concern of mine, is that, um, we don't really have a central line to report potholes. I get some emails, I'm sure some of the other commissioners get emails, then we bring it to Ed, and then Ed brings it to you. So there's a time lapse of by the time it gets the attention, um, I mean, he's been really good, 'cause I, as soon as I get it, I come in, I say, you know, uh, this person just reported this pothole, I went, I took a picture, I go out and take a picture, bring it back, and give it to him. And, um, but, you know, I wish we had some kind of central line.
We do, we do, um, Commissioner, so you can go on the website, you can report anything, you can report a streetlight, you can report a pothole, you can report an animal issue, whatever.
But a lot of times, people don't have access to that.
But it's on our website, and then, well, so it's on our website, we can maybe kind of post that a little more through Facebook or whatever, that says you have an issue, whatever, but it's on the, right on the front of the website, there's also the, there's a phone number on there for public services that, which you can call, which they take calls, lots of calls, as Michelle can tell you, hundreds of calls for potholes and streetlights and things, so maybe we, you push that, you know, we can push out more that, hey, it's, there's a link on the website, or you can call the number to report it, so we have those tools, maybe we push that out a little bit more, and and hope people will use those, but at the end of the day, you can also bring them to my office as well, I don't have a problem if you bring something, 'cause I send it to Paul and his group, and they put it in the system as though somebody else, you know, had actually put it in the system, so they can keep track of it.
I like sending them to Mr. Bass, he gets done.
Well, we hope that, we hope the staff would do it, just as, just as, I mean, that's the whole point, we got, got great staff, so I think you send it through the website, it'll get done as well.
I know, but, you know, a lot of times, people are just driving to work, and then I'll get a text, oh, you know, I just drove by the street, there's a giant, you know, pothole there.
And that's fine, just send it to me, and I'll send it to Paul, and he'll put it in the system.
That's what I've been doing, that's what I've been doing, okay.
Um, asphalt distributor, uh, what that is, is this, uh, 1,000 gallon tank, uh, liquid asphalt. Uh, perfect examples, parking lot out here, uh, biggest problem we have with our asphalt in Florida, um, you have your rain and you have your sun, that destroys asphalt very quickly, 'cause it, it bakes the asphalt, or the, the oil out of the asphalt. Um, that's why it starts getting unravelling, and it's where you get your potholes, and that's where you have a problem. So what this does, we'll go in there and we'll spray the liquid asphalt back on it, and it'll sink back into the roads. And it'll give you a good four to five years' life back on it, if the conditions are right, you know, the condition's right, you don't have very many ravelling out, you don't have very many cracks in it, we have a lot of neighborhoods that physically description that we can go in, in-house and spray those, and keep those upright too, let alone all of our city parking lots and stuff of that nature. So that's, you know, what we're looking at on that. Alright, thank you all for your time.
Hold on, hold on, I, I gotta have a question for you.
Paul's trying.
Uh, the, the, the street that's behind OK Tire, did we ever figure out what's the problem with that road, is that First Street or Second Street?
Second.
Second Street, I know it was on the list before, but we were told it was gonna hold off till we found out what was causing all the erosion and all the potholes continuously there.
So the problem we have with a lot of our streets is our sides trap the water on there, we're gonna have to go in there, and we're gonna have to take our shoulders and home them down to get the, the water off our roads, 'cause anytime you have water on your roads, it's going to create potholes, it's gonna get in your subsurface, it's gonna erode that, where we're gonna have issues. Uh, unfortunately, that's what's happened to a lot of our roads. Um, so in order to fix that, we're gonna have to go in there and clean up our shoulders, so we can get the waters off of it. Um, we're gonna have to go in there and maybe have to do some subsurface repairs on it.
I thought we had, there was a drainage problem underneath the road.
Yeah, that's what I remember, it was Second Street.
Two or three feet of water.
That's, well, I'm talking about the entire, entire road, but, you know, we're gonna have to go in there and get that done.
Richard, you might, you know anything about that?
We're gonna have to look at, we're gonna have to raise the road up to get it out of some of that sand mark, and then direct the water off the road.
So we, are we looking at doing that?
Well, I imagine when we do the pavement, it's over that road, uh,
Second Street. 10.
Yeah, well, I mean, it was on the list before, and then we were told we was gonna hold off on it, 'cause it didn't make sense to resurface it, and it still is two feet of water every time it rains.
Yes, sir, so when you do an overlay on that, you, you can go in there and put a crown into it a little bit higher of a crown, and that'll push your water off the road. I, I believe the drainage parts you're talking about is off to the side, and you have a driveway that goes in and it's collapsed. The, uh, so the water can't go through, and that's also moving the water up, pushing it back up on the road, I'm sorry, and that's what's moving it down. So we need to go in there and fix that driveway and put a new, uh, pipe in there to, to fix that issue.
Alright, then my last question is, um, have we exhausted all the funds for sidewalks for this budget? Or we still?
I'm sorry.
Have we exhausted all the side, funds for sidewalks for this budget yet?
No, sir, we have, we have, we have contractors out right now, we have three individual contracts out right now, and they're in the neighborhoods. Uh, we went to the areas with greater needs, and they're hitting those, and we're working our way back on that. Uh, I believe we still have some funds left, but we're almost depleted out of them.
Alright, I guess the one I was really concerned about was the south side of our Maca Gladden Boulevard, we talked about putting a sidewalk on that, south side?
I think, Commissioner, and I don't want to speak out of turn, but I, we have a grant currently that is gonna fund sidewalks in that area, $250,000 that we've been awarded, and staff's putting together the layout, the design and layout of which sidewalks that will, that those will cover, and I'll get you that information, I don't want to miss, misspeak, so I'll get you the information on which roads that'll be. But there's several roads in that area that we got a grant for that'll be, that will connect those sidewalks.
Alright.
One, one of the things that Paul's doing is, is we're, now we're gonna upgrade the, the concrete, be a reinforced concrete, all these, you know, where these pads are cracking, they're gonna add a, is it some kind of?
It's fiber.
A fiber, so it'll, it should last
Longer.
Longer than, even when the truck runs over or something, that's the problem, and so we just, you know, for the 10% extra, you know, it should, should last, so, yeah.
Kind of jogged on my memory, what about, is it you that have contacted for tree removals?
Yes, ma'am.
Is, and I remember you saying there wasn't any in the fund to remove one particular tree?
No, ma'am, what it was is that, uh, the tree service that we were using, they reached the ceiling, so we have to go back and get rebids, 'cause we can no longer use that tree service.
Okay.
So that's what we're doing now, is, is we're, we're getting other parties involved to, to get that. I know which street, which tree you're talking about.
I know, I pass it with the X all the time.
Yes, ma'am, and we have that one actually getting slated to get.
It's like on your priority list?
Yes, ma'am, that, that's, that's number one priority on that, on our tree removal.
Okay.
So.
What's the timeframe for that?
Um, I, I would hate to say anything, 'cause the trees, we're working with the tree service, um, I can get back with them tomorrow and find out exactly what date they could do that, and I can get with you and, and let you know.
Only because the, the residents in that area have already contacted me twice, and I've already said, the X is there, we know it's there, and, uh, we've had some storms and some, you know, rainy days, and they're concerned. And, uh, you know, I tried to take a ride back and forth, and I see the tree's still in the same place.
Which tree is it?
It's the one down by Christiana, almost going toward Volta. It's that huge, huge tree that's on the, okay, 'cause I'm not good with north or south, so when you're coming from Ramo to Volta, it's on your left.
It's on the west side.
But if you're coming from Volta into, uh, Christiana, it's on your right, you can't miss it, it's got a giant X on it.
Yes, ma'am.
And I mean, even the landscapers who work on the, uh, the inside of the community inside, they were the ones that actually brought that to the attention of some of the residents, that we should look at that tree.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Becker?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Paul. Alright, Richard.
Okay, stormwater, uh, the big thing that I'm looking forward to this fall is we're having a workshop with the board to talk about the, the needs assessment and the rate study. Uh, so you'll see that the stormwater is a little bit flat right now, because we need to finalize that needs assessment and the rate study to begin to, uh, you know, to fund some significant improvements with both the roadway, I mean, the stormwater system maintenance and the retention pond system maintenance, and then also our, uh, stormwater permit compliance. We've made some progress this year with the permit compliance, we're doing better, DEP is like that, and so after the needs assessment, hopefully we're gonna have some more people to help with that program. Uh, the personnel, Paul has had two people actually funded out of George's group, uh, to do the, uh, the stormwater maintenance. So we're gonna move those folks from Fund 3181, uh, actually into the stormwater 3151, so the guys working on stormwater will be paid out of the stormwater fund. And then down at the bottom of the slide, there's some, there's some relatively small increases, uh, the contractual services is primarily, uh, adding $15,000 to that contractual services, so we can pick up the street sweeping of, uh, 441 and 436.
Are they, is, so I, I see some of that ownership is FDOT, are they reimbursing us for that?
Yes, sir, they are. Yes, and then the operating supplies, Paul's realized that our, our base to replace, uh, you know, when you do stormwater pipes, you have to stabilize around the pipe before you put the pavement over the pipe, and so he needs additional bait. you put the pavement over the pipe. And so, he needs additional base and then he needs additional, uh, operating supplies. Uh, he's been running out of budget to repair, uh, isolated stormwater structures and drainage outlets and things of that nature. So, that's those two increases. On the next slide. Okay, so we've got a total of $420,000 budgeted, um, in the capital outlay. That's primarily keeping status quo of the stormwater system improvements, the stormwater pipelinings. Uh, we do, we're doing a study right now, we have a consultant doing a study. There's a, a problem that's, that's happened for a long time down at Tanglewild and Usler that Paul's actually going to buy the materials for and, and, and reconstruct the area down near that intersection, uh, next year. And then in equipment, um, you know, I've gone around and looked at every stormwater pond the city owns and maintains and I've realized that some of them we just, we haven't had equipment for and we haven't focused on buying the equipment. So, our stormwater ponds, a lot of them are, are maintained with, you know, brush and small trees. And so, uh, Paul wants a, a tractor with a boom arm to be able to get in there and, and clean out some of those ponds. And then there's some, uh, you know, we need a trailer again so that, uh, uh, you know, we don't have to worry about the equipment being stolen when we're out in the field and we're not right at the, uh, where the trucks are. And then, and then the GPS units and the laptops are really just to, uh, continue to move forward with our inventory of the drainage system.
Do, do we share any stormwater, um, stormwater systems in Rock Springs Ridge? Is this, is, does the city?
The city maintains the stormwater in the roadways, yes, ma'am, in the right of way. The stormwater ponds are maintained by the homeowners association.
Okay, and those stormwater systems have been maintained in Rock Springs Ridge?
Yes.
Not the ones that the HOA are responsible for?
Right.
But the city?
Well, we've, we've done the best we could over the years with the limited staff. Uh, we did, uh, Paul and his folks inspected, uh, more structures than we'd ever inspected and more stormwater pipe this year than we had inspected over, uh, foreseeable past that I'm aware of. Uh, we did a lot more. So, we've identified some of those that are damaged that need to be fixed, that are in, uh, sort of a short-term plan to repair. Uh, Rock Springs Ridge, we don't, we haven't gotten a lot of complaints for, uh, for drainage repairs out there, so that wasn't at the top of our list. But, uh, come this fall, uh, we, we have a new year of inspecting stormwater systems, so we'll make sure that we spend some time up in Rock Springs Ridge.
How many do we have at Rock Springs Ridge?
I don't know how many inlets and stormwater pipes we have out there. We do have a map of where they are and how many there are, but I, I don't know that off the top of my head.
When was the last time anybody even inspected them?
Uh, it was, uh, it's basically just on a, uh, on a, as needed, as we get calls, as we get complaints on specific inlets.
Ma'am, we, what we're doing right now is we have a program to where we go out at least once or twice a week to go out and inspect inlets because we have a quota we have to, to fulfill each year of, of so many inlet boxes and pipes we have to inspect. So, it's a new program that I've started, so we'll go out and make sure we inspect as many as we can. I know we were lax before, but now we're being very aggressive on, on making sure we keep up with our inspections. Um, if that's something in, something we need to be concerned about, we can go in there and start, uh, paying more attention to that area. Because as I said, though, we will go at least once or twice a week to start inspecting on that. That's something we're gonna keep.
Is, is there somewhere in, in our city website that, you know, residents, any residents from the city can go in if they are concerned about a particular stormwater, uh, system?
What they've been doing...
Like, when the last time it was inspected, was it maintained?
What they've been doing is they've just been calling, calling me and I'll go over there and we'll go over and look at it and inspect it. Um, I don't have anything that I know of that will tell me the last time it was inspected. That's one of the reasons why we are going aggressively on inspecting and, and trying to make sure, um, that we're, we're keeping up with it. Uh, we're actually, uh, lining in our, our inlets now, our drainage pipes. We have that set up now too, to where we're, we're taking care of that. So, we're not only inspecting, but we're setting up to where we can go in and start getting everything lined also where we need to.
Okay.
So, we're, we're being very aggressive with it right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Alright, thank you.
Oh, I, I thought you meant, I thought you meant for Paul. Um, just two questions. The first one I already asked about the FDOT. On the Border Lake and Lake Page, Lake Pleasant, that was on the lead-in packet, it had, it was highlighted yellow and it said wishlist and then it said CIP question mark. What's the, what are we doing with that?
We've got, well, I'll, we're, there's a lot of federal money, looks like we might qualify for, so it's, it's, it's a joint effort. We've got a couple of different, so we kind of up in the air. Orange County wants to partner with us. What they want to do is replace the drainage well, which is the cheapest, um, way of taking care of the excess water in Border Lake. One problem is that the DEP may or may not, we should be able to replace one drainage well for another one, but they're getting tighter and tighter on what, on water quality. So, I've asked Orange County, said, "Hey, guys, if we can get a big grant from the federal government to take, run a pipe along the same easement as our utilities ink pipe that runs from Wicava out to Cleveland, would you guys be interested in doing that instead of a drainage well?" So, we'd do two things. One is it would take water off Border Lake and off Lake Page and off, um, what's the other lake?
Pleasant.
Pleasant, Pleasant Lake, Lake Pleasant. It would also give us an additional, um, you know, water capacity storage, you would have to have storage for it. So, anyway, they, they said, "Okay, why don't we, why don't you entertain that and we'll see if we get some of the federal dollars and if we do, then we might go a different route, which is not put in a drainage well and fix the other two drainage wells, but actually just take and pipe the water, the excess water to our facility out on Cleveland, treat it and then use it as in our reclaimed system." So, we're kind of waiting to see what the fed, federal government is and then what, what Orange County, obviously they're our partner in this and, and, um, you know, it's, it's, e- either way, it's still big money, but I, I think for, for the water quality issue, I think DEP would be more satisfied with, with piping and, and cleaning than putting stormwater down into the drainage well. So, that's a long answer to a short question.
But from a budgetary perspective, are we putting anything in the budget?
No, sir, we pulled that out of the budget for right now because we, we want to, uh, to sync up, uh, you know, in the neighborhood of 50% funds from the city and 50% funds from the county. And since DEP is sort of up in the air with whether they'll allow the drain well or not and the possibility of federal money, uh, we don't have money in the budget right now.
Do we need to in order to show our
Good faith.
high desire to get this done? You know, some, you know, some of these things, grants or when we apply for money, they want to see it, is in our top of mind? Do, do we feel that there's any risk that we can't get this done? Because obviously it's a, this is a high priority, I think, for everyone. Um, and if we don't have anything in our budget, it just kind of paints a weird picture.
Keep in mind that you did on the Duke Energy dollars, you did dedicate $250,000. So, you do, we do have something sitting there. There's 250 sitting there designated.
Is that rolling with this budget, though? I mean, does that...
No, that's a separate, you designated that separate, so it'll sit there until it comes back to you to be used for that purpose or redirected. So, it's sitting there designated.
But when we publish this budget, though, is that going to be part of the budget, the recorded budget?
The 250 will not be. It will come separate. It'll, it's sitting there holding, it's always a designation. When we find out grant money's what we're gonna get or whatever, then that's when we'll come back and do an amendment to use that 250 or redirect it.
So, what we earmarked for the 2.5, I call it the Duke Windfall, we're not, that, none of that is included in this budget?
If you recall, last night, I said that you had earmarked 300 thou, you designated 300,000 for the fire engine.
Right.
That is in this budget. You'll see that that's in this budget for, to offset, that's part of the 300,000. You're, if you look, you're, for tomorrow's agenda, there's a budget amendment that for the three of the items that you approved, which was the restrooms, um, the birding park and, um, what's the other one? There were, there were three items. I forgot, I just slipped my mind. Um, but there's three items, there were three items that were in there. Those are gonna be coming back to you as a budget amendment, so you'll see that and it'll be amended. So, it won't show in this budget because you're doing an amendment to it. So, it goes, it's amendment to the current budget.
Okay.
So, you'll see that. So, each one of those that you designated, like Commissioner Becker said before, we were just setting designations then. Now, as the budget amendments come forward is when you will approve the actual budget amendment for those items. And then this 250, as you, as you see, is still sitting there. It's designated, it's still sitting there and it will come back to you at a later date if we decide to use it for this project.
Yeah, I mean, again, I'm of my own opinion that all that stuff with the Duke Energy money or the, the CARES Act money in our budget, we allocate the monies to what we wanted to allocate them at that time and it's formally recorded in the budget. Then if we change priority or changing our funding priorities, then we do budget amendments per normal throughout the course of the year.
Correct.
For us to be able to see where those funds are going to in the budget.
Right, you'll see that. You'll see every budget amendment will come back, so you'll see them. If you have your list, you could just check them off. There's, those three came, that a budget amendment. Then you'll see the 300,000's in the current budget because we put the fire engine in the budget, because we're paying 300,000 of that portion and we're using 300,000. That revenue, which basically is a, as a revenue, will offset that, that portion in the budget. So, you'll see them and, and I'll point those out to you as we move along. You'll see them as the amendments come to you. But if you have your list, it's very easy, you can just check those off and say, "Okay, there's still three remaining on the list that haven't come back."
And then...
But they're designated, like you said, they're sitting earmarked.
Okay. Um, and then the last question, and I'll pick up on your comment because I see it on the wishlist, it's the top item. And you said, "We did what we could with the staff that we have." You have staff requests, are those in the budget?
The staff are moving from, again, uh...
So, all those ones on the wishlist?
Yeah, the ones on the wishlist.
Are the shifts on the beginning of the page?
Yeah, those during the negotiation with Edward and the mayor, those, those four positions got cut with, again, looking out for the needs assessment and the, the rate study. It'll come up in the workshop this fall and hopefully we'll get, that'll show at least four people.
We'd hope to have this rate study and it's been way more complicated. We thought we found, as with water, you'll hear a little later about water, we, we found people that have been paying stormwater fees and so we've got to get that right. And then when we get that right, we're gonna, absolutely gonna fund stormwater. It's, it's, it is underfunded, no doubt about it. But we've got, we'll have the funds when we get, we get the rate study done. The problem is that money doesn't, because that's part of your tax bill, won't be until next November.
Right.
So, we're, you know, because it's, 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 will be on your, your actual property tax. So...
Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you, Richard. Okay, Michelle. Don't be, don't be nervous, you'll be okay.
Okay. For the public administration building...
Pull your, pull your mic down, sir.
The public administration building, we run the daily operations, run the manage, uh, the building itself, take all the customer service calls and I can attest that we do get pothole calls. So, those are coming in, we get those quite often and we do have work orders in the system for them. We also do all the purchasing through the departments, the warehouse specialist. Um, currently, we are going down in employees from nine last year to eight this year. Some of our line items have gone up. Um, basically, they weren't properly funded, um, like the contractual services. Some of those things were in the wrong line items last year, so that's why that line item went up particularly because we have to make sure they're actually being budgeted out of the right line items. For utility services, that was actually underbudgeted for last year. We actually got a call from UC in utility billing that we were running out of money in May, so we had to do some budget transfers to make sure we make it to the end of the year paying our utility bills. Uh, repair and maintenance, one of the biggest increases in this line item is that we're doing an ADA retrofit to all the doors in the building. Um, and then for training, we're actually going to have several people go to a procurement training, government procurement training, so we can learn how to do that properly. So, we're doing it for the whole department on a whole correctly. As for the building, um, that's for the entrance door and the gate, that's for ADA compliance as well. And then overall, our budget is decreasing. One of the big reasons is we had to do the roof repair last year and obviously that's repaired now. So, whereas we have some line items that are going up, overall, our budget has gone down.
Hey, any questions for Michelle? Alright, thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Design, Vlad.
Alright, good evening, everyone.
Well, first I want to thank Vlad, he's the one that put this whole, whole, our packet together, so he, he worked last week.
It took a while, but...
Had a couple of adjustments on the fly, but...
Yeah, we had to make last-minute adjustments yesterday and today as well, so...
So, anyway, but thanks Vlad for doing all that for the, the whole team.
So, our activities and programs managed, we do manage a lot of programs. Uh, I'm gonna start with the planning and engineering program. Uh, we have the utilities capital improvement program, which we're gonna go a little bit more into. We have the utilities rehabilitation replacement program and we also take care of all the utilities development review, which is all the new developments that come to town. Uh, we also have the construction management program that includes the project management and the construction inspection. So, we do all the construction inspections for all new developments, including the city pro, uh, city projects and, uh, outside developers' projects. So, the asset management program is a new thing that comes in, uh, geographic information system, GS administration. We take care of that as well as the public works and utilities asset management that will be starting soon. We're bringing that actually on the next council meeting for August the 4th. Right?
Yep.
We're going on August the 4th. So, we're gonna be bringing in front of you for approval. We have a piggyback contract that we're gonna be acquiring a software, so, uh, that will be used by the entire public services department. On the personnel, we don't have minor changes, just 7.6% budget increase. Uh, no new full-time employees, we have nine, we had, we have currently nine. We're gonna have nine in the new fiscal year. Uh, the utility design manager, that's myself. Uh, we have two full-time employees in the planning and engineering program. One of them is a professional engineer. We're hopefully getting another one. Uh, they will help with a lot of the design work because, as you can see, in a minute, I'm gonna turn on the capital improvement, you'll see we have a lot of projects coming. Uh, we have four full-time employees in the construction management program, uh, two inspectors and two construction coordinators, and we have two full-time employees in the asset management program. They will be basically managing the, they're currently managing the GS administration system, but also the public works and utility asset management program. So, one of them is a GS professional and, uh, he really helps a lot and he also helped me with this, some of these presentations. So, on the supply and other services, we have slight budget decrease. There's really, I mean, these items are really small. We have some increases, some decreases. Uh, overall, I believe it's like, uh, 20, $28,000, actually a little bit more maybe. Let's just go to it. Um, yeah, I think it's, uh, it's $121,000 overall. It's, it's not a big amount. Uh, we have some increase in the operating supplies, uh, some increase in the office supplies. That's operating mainly some of the new softwares that we're gonna be exploring to, to, to acquire so we can do a little bit more of the design and analysis work. Uh, vehicle maintenance, we have some increase there. We had three vehicles last year, now with the new, additional two inspectors, uh, we got five vehicles. We basically didn't, didn't request any new vehicles to be purchased, but what we are doing, we're repurposing some of the vehicles from the other divisions, trying to save some money that way. The fuel and gasoline is the same type of increase because of the five vehicles instead of three. Uh, we have some decrease in the memberships, uh, books, publications and subscriptions, and we have some decrease in professional services. Last year, we had $100,000, this year we have only $60,000. And, uh, last year, we were actually applying, uh, we had to complete the mandated, uh, federal mandated, uh, studies for the risk and, uh, assessment analysis and also for the emergency plans for the entire department. Uh, going to the capital outlay, that's really a small budget. We only have $31.2,000. Uh, we're acquiring a new surveying drone, uh, under the equipment, the 6400 line. That's about 7, $7.6,000 for, uh, all of it, including the, uh, the additional equipment that comes with this. This surveying drone actually helps for... This surveying drone actually helps for monitoring a lot of the inspection. All we are doing also, doing a lot of surveys with this so we can generate the surface. So when we do the design, it really helps with that, saving a lot of money on the surveying. And the two other items are the intangible assets, that are the Inovis Info Water, which is about $18,000, that's basically $15,000 for the one single user license. And we have about $3,000 for the annual subscription. And we have the RED Team, which is the software configuration, and the annual subscription for $5.6,000. And this is the project management software that we try to utilize in our, in our planning and engineering program and the construction as well. So overall budget line 3410, it's about 6%, budget increase. So I will move on to the capital improvement plan if you don't have any questions for this portion.
Any questions? Okay.
Yeah, the next slide, what I want to show you is basically the total of six slides that show the 401 Water Operating Fund and the 403 Funds for the Water Reclaim and Sewer. They show bulk of our work, actually. If I go through all the slides, this is just for informational purpose. Maybe we can do another presentation through one of the city council meetings. That we can go project by project and you see what's in the capital improvement program. But overall, what you see is, for next year, we're projecting about $24 million of work, so. We're actually really working on the major projects and, and our operating fund is really just to cover the basic expenses. And if I looked at this group, at the nine people that we have in the design engineering division, we actually do a lot of work when you consider this 24 million, just the number of projects in the 24 million in the, in the capital expense, so. So on this first slide, what you see is the 401, the Water Operating Fund, that's for the portable and drinking water. So everything that is highlighted in blue are actually projects that we're gonna be doing this year. The rest of them are just the five-year program. And the one that you see in green is actually the project that will come in the future that we're trying to, to apply for some federal grants. We're hoping that we have a, we actually believe we have strong projects, so we're hoping we can get some money for that in the future. The next slide, it's the same concept, everything that you see in blue, it's already funded. It's gonna be included in this year's budget. And the one that is in green is actually the one that is $1.5 million. That's the Northwest Water Treatment Plant, the 1 million ground storage tank addition that Mayor Nerson worked closely on it. And we actually got $1.5 million awarded through the Congresswoman...
Well, let's, let's hope it gets through.
Well, they, they're gonna be voting in a week.
It's, it's in the bill as we, as we speak, so yeah.
Yeah, but in about two weeks, we should know about it. I mean, what, out of the 10 projects, ours is actually the largest project, and it's 1.5. I think the second one that was listed was 1.2, and the other eight are below $1 million, so that's pretty significant. The other ones that you see in green, it's actually, we're trying to focus on the water treatment plants, and those we're gonna be applying, those are two big projects, they're coming in millions of dollars. We're gonna be applying for some federal grants and state grants, whatever is available out there. Currently, we're working, one of our consultants on the water treatment plants regionalization study because right now, we have five water treatment plants. We continue the way, we're expanding to the northwest area, we're gonna need potentially another two. And we're trying to consolidate those into four, which will be more central, so we don't have to do a lot of treatment. And actually, maybe repurpose the other three as a repump stations, or we'll just completely abandon them and just invest all the money into these four. So we're looking at the build-out solution, basically. Right now, we have about 64,000 customers in our utility service area. What we're looking in the future at the build-out, right now, with the, with the density that we have projected for the city and for unincorporated Orange County that is in our utility service area, we're looking at potentially going between 135,000 to 150,000 population, so. We have to start planning for the future, and that's why we, we started putting this list on the project and hopefully we'll get some grants that will help with this, either coming from the state, coming from DEP, San Jones, or coming from the federal. So that's on the portable drinking water. I'm gonna move on to the wastewater sewer. The one that you see also in green here, it's also some project that we're gonna be applying for some grants. I'm working closely with the mayor on this, and Nicole is helping as well. We have the lift station rehabilitation replacement program that we wanna try to put about $1 million every year. For this year, our plan is to replace one of the oldest lift stations, which is lift station number 17.
Where is that one located, that lift station?
That one is located just behind, just north of Frank Carlton Community Center on Forest Avenue.
Yeah, because there's a couple of lift stations around that. Don't smell well.
Yeah, well, we have identified, we have identified a few, one of them is the one on Bradshaw, which is...
Right, that's the one on Bradshaw, that the business is there.
And we also have lift station 50, which is just north of the fire station number three on West Orange Avenue, over there.
The one that's by Piedmont, is that where, I know the one on Bradshaw, that one's actually, two business owners have taken me to that one.
No, Piedmont is the one by...
Yeah, which one are you referring to?
Lift station 50 is on Orange Avenue.
Station four.
Past the fire sta, I'm sorry, past Fire Station four.
There you go.
I said three, I missed four.
Okay, three, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, no, no, I was thinking about that one, and for some reason, I said three and four.
Okay, so now I know which one you're talking about. Do the lift stations get inspected and maintained throughout?
Yes.
Yes, would they always get maintained? Bradshaw, we actually got a contract with Evolve, which they take care of the order controls program. We're supposed to suck out all the bad waters, it goes to the filtration system, and then what comes out is supposed to be taken there. They monitor that, and we pay for that service, so, you know, if the customers have an issue with the order, they can call us, and then at that time, we go check the lift station, we contact Evolve, and they got 24 hours to correct the issue. So that way, whatever's coming out of the station is...
Yeah, that's the lift station that I've been taking to.
So I'll have the guys go ahead tomorrow, and then at that point, you'll call Evolve, put in a service ticket, and then at that time, we'll have 24 hours to respond and correct whatever they should be.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, so beside the lift stations, we're gonna be applying for a grant for the one on South Forest Avenue, which comes from lift station number 17 and goes down to the Apac Water Eclamation Facility on Cleveland. That's a 28, 20-inch line that is about 49 years old. It's one of the ductile iron pipelines that has really deteriorated over time, and it's, it's ripe for replacement. So that's a major project, we're almost talking about two miles of line in the middle of the downtown section, so. About $2 million. What I want to show you is, you can see in parentheses here, they're all funded, they all should be funded in 3171. So the one there in blue, I'm gonna skip to that slide so you can see that, and then we'll go back. This is the wastewater collection maintenance. So what you see here in the capital outlay, we have put at 1.175 million dollars in the budget, but I put in the parenthesis to 4.145 million because we're gonna be looking for those two projects that are listed in blue, 1 million for the lift stations for a grant, and also the replacement of a 20-inch sewer pipeline along South Forest. Almost 2 million for a grant. So right now, we're gonna be requesting 1.175. Hopefully, we'll get some grants for these other projects. If we don't, then we're gonna come back to you and we're gonna request eventually more money.
Just one question.
Mm-hmm.
I keep saying that, and then I ask another one. We, we, I hear the word grant, we're gonna ask for grants, grants, grants. Who's doing the grants? Who's actually initiating the grants?
Well, there's a lot of federal programs right now, they're underway, as well as a few state programs. And one of them was initiated by the government of the centers. And I believe they went through the first list of applications, and they still have, I don't remember exactly, may or may remember. They still have over $400 million in that, right? So we're gonna be applying for some of this. And some projects were awarded, like, the ones that were on the list, I remember one was North Miami. They had like $11 million, another one in that area, South Florida, another 10, $11 million. So these are huge grants, they're actually given by the state through this governor's program. There was established without any participation by the municipalities.
Also, how do you apply for that?
It's a, it's a collaborative effort between Vlad, myself, and Nicole. Nicole's doing a lot of the grant applications, Vlad kind of putting the...
Yeah, we, we have just started working on this, so we were trying to identify all these projects that can potentially get some grants, so. The deadlines are, we still have some, a few months till we can...
Yeah, we, we had some, we found that we, we had to have by Friday at 5:00, so we were scrambling last Friday at 3:30 to try to get three grants.
Yeah, we submitted three grants, actually, like, the last 30 minutes before 5 o'clock.
When, when would you expect an answer on that? Because, because if we, if a million dollars is what you feel is a natural sustainability refurb and replace, and we get through the fiscal year, we don't get the grant money, the next year, we've got two years to worry about worth of natural maintenance. Is there any funds that we should put in here that aren't grant-backed so to make sure that we're doing some of that rehabilitation work?
We can do that, and actually, we, we have done that with some of the lines. So we're kind of, we just want to be careful, see what, what, in the next, we don't have much more time, like you said. But see what we can apply for in the next month or so, and then whatever, you know, we can't apply for. Well, you're right, Commissioner, we will have to put an amount, at least some amount, to, to cover anything that goes on during the year. So yeah, there will be some dollars going forward.
But I mean, they're all, I think they all have different timelines, so you can't, yeah, they're not all, you know, September 1st, we'll know on all of them.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, yeah, it's a, so one of the things I'll have Nicole, maybe what I could do is send that to everybody. Nicole's kind of putting a spreadsheet together on all the grants we've applied for, you know, when, 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 you know, what it was for, you know, what department...
That would actually be informative because...
Yeah, and they're very specific because some of the...
It kind of coincides with our budget, and it allows us to say, okay, this we can budget for because we definitely need to address it and do it now. Or we can have a project that we can wait for that grant and not put it in the budget because then a lot of times, the grant isn't awarded if it's in the budget, and I do understand that. But I, I like to have sort of, what grants have we put in for? This way, if we don't get the grant, at some point, I like within our budget to earmark some funds so that we can at least keep the project in some kind of maintenance that we're addressing. Because just, if we don't get the grant and then we're not doing anything about it, the, the next year, we've, we've got to find more money to address the problem and resolve the issue.
And, and we're gonna be working more diligently on that. We just had this morning a meeting with our, one of our consultants, Raffelis, on the utility rate study. So I, I would say within the next few months, we'll have a pretty solid data on that so we can, we can do a new structure of the utility rates. And hopefully, next year's budget, we're gonna be addressing a lot of this. Now, some of these projects, again, we have to remember that some of them are replacement and rehabilitation projects, so we can fund them from the capital fund, from the sewer impact fees, for example, or water impact fees. We're gonna have to fund them from the 401, from the operating fund. Like those that are new, and again, the same thing with the grants, some, some grants will apply for the, for the replacement or rehabilitation programs, some will apply for the new, but most likely, they will go into the 401 operating fund. So it's, it's a little tricky to work with these numbers and to get everything funded right considering, you know, our utility service area is really huge. And that's what I put at the beginning of the, of the budget, and one of the slides actually is calling for 106 square miles of utility service area compared to the 34-point-something of the land area that we have in the, in the city, in the city limits. So compare that with City of Orlando, for example, 106, that's about the size of the entire City of Orlando. That's how utility service area is huge. It's, we're talking about a span of maybe 15 miles from the southeast corner to the northwest corner over by Mount Dora, which is pretty much, what is that, Stony Brook, Stony Brook area there?
Yeah.
That's where our border line is, it's the Lake County line, so it's significant, it's significant. And that's why Glenn's gonna talk a little bit more about that, about the increasing utility services, just pushing all these lift stations from the northwest section coming back to the south area where we treat that wastewater, and then we have to send it back as a reclaimed water. It's just an enormous effort that we're just struggling a lot with. And...
It sounds complicated.
Yeah, it is, it is, and, and that's why we want to acquire this asset management program that will help us. One of the modules is actually an energy manager. It's called, beside the capital predictor that we're gonna have, and we can input all the data, when we can replace all the pipes, so we can develop actually a timeline for every single asset in the city. And we'll put in a regular schedule when it needs to be replaced, what is the criticality of failure, and what is the consequence, and all of that. So it's, it's a lot of data science embedded into that. And especially with the, with the energy manager, what we're trying to do is, we can potentially save between 3% to 5% of the energy consumption throughout the city. And we're gonna bring that in the next council meeting, as I mentioned, on August the 4th. And we believe that that, that system's gonna pay, that asset management program's gonna pay for itself, but just saving in energy cost, when to run the pumps and when to run the other pumps, pushing it back and forth. And it's just a complicated system, and it's, it's a huge system.
So we don't have that right now?
We don't have it right now, we're gonna start implementing that if it gets approved in August. They're gonna give us two months free, and then officially, we're gonna start paying for, for the subscription on October 1st, basically, when the new fiscal year starts.
And, and what is the cost to that?
The cost is $104,000 for the three modules, which is one for the work orders. The other one is, as I said, for the energy manager, and the third one is the capital predictor. That will also help with the roadways. Once we have this data that Paul talked about earlier, we're gonna embed all that data into the system, and then the software's gonna spit out basically what is the best maintenance for the roadways that we maintain.
So is that being included in the budget?
That's in your current FY '21 budget?
That's in the current budget.
So it will, it will be paid out of the current budget, not the, not the upcoming?
Yeah, so, so that's gonna be 104 for the subscription, for the annual subscription, for the three modules. And it's gonna be about $76,000 for the integration. So we're looking at about $180,000. I believe we currently have 225 budgeted last year, if I'm not mistaken, so.
Well, everything that you explained, it, it just, I feel that it's going to sort of give us, or give your department, an ongoing of how we're...
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that will...
So I think that's a necessity for us?
That will tremendously help with planning, yeah, because the planning effort is really critical. And we have to spend a lot of hours basically doing data analysis on, by hand, what if I do this, what if I do that, instead of having all these into, you know, a more complex system that can actually do different kind of analysis and options and opportunities to, to go with some of these projects.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your explanation, I, I think I got it.
All right, I'm just gonna scroll back, I think we covered...
So now we're going back?
We stopped at the 401 Sewer Operating Fund, right? We can move to the 403 Sewer Impact Fund. Again, everything in blue, that's gonna be funded, we're gonna go with those projects. Everything in green, that's gonna come in the coming years. We're gonna try to, to apply for some grants, and hopefully, we get some of those grants that we can eliminate them from the list here, and we'll save a lot of money on that. Going to reclaim, those that are in blue, those are the projects that will go this year. And on the 403 Reclaim Water Impact Fund, same thing, those that are in blue will go this year. The one that will be applying for a grant will be the Plymouth Rental Road between Lester and Ponk and the 24-inch pipeline. That's the most critical one because that helps us push all the reclaimed water from the Apac Water Eclamation Facility to the north, especially to the new reclaimed water plant, the Golden Gen, and as well as northwest. So, because we receive a lot of water from other municipalities, like City of Altamont is sending a lot of reclaimed water to us, as well as Utilities Inc. in Orange County. And we need to transfer that, that water because we don't have the storage on the south side, we need to push it to the north, which is the... we need to push it to the north, which is the three ponds that you see at the northwest Recreation Park by the amphitheater, and the new Golden Gem that is under construction right now, that should be completed by the end of May of next year. So between those two, we're gonna have about roughly five hundred and fifty million gallons of storage, so...
Of reclaimed water?
Of reclaimed water, correct. And we're gonna be bringing another project, which is that Apopka Water Reclamation Facility that you see in green here, that will potentially come next year, that's another one we'll be looking for a grant, we're trying to build on the south side, just south of our wastewater treatment plant, south of Snowden Road, another, may potentially three hundred million gallons storage.
What do we do with all that water?
Well, that's the problem, we're receiving a lot of water, our balance is, mass balance is critical, and on average, we're receiving about, well, we're producing three million gallons a day. Our demand is about six to six point five million, but we're also receiving another close to ten million gallons a day. So we're about fifty percent extra we're receiving of what we actually need right now. And, you know, it's with the new developments coming, that's gonna start balancing each other, but we're maybe about good ten years away from that, so. So we need to start storing this water temporarily, especially during the wet season like we have now, and then during the dry season, nobody's sending any water, because they also need the reclaimed water, too.
Yeah, we were, I mean, we signed a contract with Orange County, which we really had no reason to sign.
When we, do we get revenue from that?
Well, we cost, it costs for Orange County's water.
Yes, so for City of Altamont, we're not paying anything, the water we're getting from them, as well as from Utilities Inc. The City, the Orange County, we're paying, I believe, thirty-five cents per thousand gallons. And then we have a contract with City of Mount Dora, which will be selling water to Mount Dora reclaimed water for one dollar per thousand gallons.
Okay.
Now, we can make some profit on that, but they haven't, they built their system, but they haven't started taking any water. So we're gonna, we don't expect anything's gonna happen this year, because they had some problems with their system, they're gonna have to re-engineer their system, and that was the last information I got from St. John's.
But fortunately, Orange County has redirected some of the water to O'Koey, so we're not obligated to take as much water, and we appreciate Orange County Utilities working with us.
No, they're really helping, the last three years, they're really helping.
We could be eaten.
Okay.
And we actually have, next week, we have a meeting with them next Wednesday, so we're gonna be discussing those matters as well.
Okay.
I believe I covered everything on the CIP, so I hope I didn't...
Any other questions for Vlad? Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Okay, so another page, are we up to?
Thank you, Glenn. Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor Edward, Lynn Brooks, Water Resource Operations Manager. I'm gonna be presenting three different budgets here. First one we're gonna start out with, this is gonna be a water treatment plant, Budget Line Thirty-One Eleven. Facilities operated, we operate five water treatment plants, I think all of you are kind of aware, Rosenbacher Water Plant, Mount Plymouth Lakes, Northwest Water Plant, Plymouth Regional, Sheiler Oaks. Activities and programs managed, distribution of potable and drinking water, water quality program, and a water conservation program. Personnel, we had no three point one, I'll take that back, a three point one percent budget increase, that's due mostly to just salary and benefits, we added no new employees, we're able to manage good with what we have right now, so we have no increased employees there. Supplies and other services, there you see a twenty-nine point four percent budget increase. The main reason that we're looking at here on utility services, we had a big increase there, forty-four percent increase, or two hundred and eleven thousand dollars. The reason being, as you heard Vlad speak of, maybe on Mount Plymouth Lakes, we had to go to, as part of our St. John's River Water Management Permit, we had to go to the lower aquifer, and we was working on that last year at Mount Plymouth Lakes, and we did get that finished, and we brought Mount Plymouth Lakes back up online, so we have a new, not a new, but another, the water plant that's come online, and we've seen an increase in our utility services, as you would expect. Contractual services, it's minimal, we have a twelve hundred dollars increase. Water conservation program, we have a slight increase there, we're hoping now, due to COVID, we think things are getting better, we can get some more workshops going and stuff, and really get that program up going. Operating supplies, minimal again, one percent decrease, jump the gun here. Capital outlay, as you heard Vlad speak there, some of a one point seven eight six million dollar budget. Part of that is gonna be, again, the Plymouth Regional, not to be confused with Mount Plymouth, we have to go to the lower Florida aquifer as mandated by our St. John's Permit, at a cost of six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We also, and again, we're behind on these, so this is something we can't, we can't keep putting off, we put off for a while, so St. John's is on us, and so we have, this is a part of our permit, we have to do. We also have one at Rosenbacher Water Treatment Plant, again, the replacement of the one upper Florida aquifer well with one lower Florida aquifer well per St. John's River Consumption Use Permit, and that's at five hundred and thirty-three thousand, or a twenty-eight point five percent increase. Also at Rosenbacher Water Treatment Plant, we have to rehab the ground storage tank of our one million gallon storage tank, that tank is, was nineteen eighty-nine, and it's in need of some work, so we have a half a million dollars allocated toward that to get that done. And also, miscellaneous, replacement of the water distribution flow meters, one of the things that we have is, we have, as you heard Edward and them talk about, we're trying to, water loss, where are we finding it, it's one of the big things, we're pretty efficient on all of our meters coming out and stuff, and we're mandated by the state to be within a five percent tolerance, and we are on those. The only thing is, we're talking about our distribution leaving our plants, that's the big twenty-four inch mag meters, those haven't been replaced in about seven or eight years, so we're allocating fifty thousand dollars toward that to get those changed out, and we feel that'll help us to be more, more efficient on our numbers.
Before we move on, I just wanted to clarify two things here, just, I want to clarify two things.
Go ahead.
So what you see on the two projects in the infrastructure, the Plymouth Regional Water Treatment Plant and the Rosenbacher Treatment Plant, you see before the dollar amount, sixty percent on the Plymouth Regional, and the twenty-eight point five percent on the Rosenbacher. The reason for it is because at Plymouth Regional, we're replacing three wells, there are currently upper Florida aquifer, and there are three hundred gallons per minute each capacity, right? But we're gonna replace them with a one fifteen hundred gallons per minute to the lower Florida aquifer. So that means that the replacement for nine hundred for nine hundred, you're gonna have to count that sixty percent, you're gonna have to come from the operating fund, while the other, because we're increasing capacity, the additional six hundred will come from the, from the water impact fees. And the same thing on the Rosenbacher, we're replacing one thousand gallons per minute well that is currently in the, drawing water from the upper aquifer to the one that is gonna be thirty-five hundred gallons per minute. So that's the difference, twenty-eight point five percent with seventy-one point five percent, that will come, increased capacity will come from the, from the water impact fees. And that's how you're gonna see it in the budget once it's presented to you. So you're gonna see the same project funded with certain percentage in the 401, funded with another percentage in the 403, but it's actually gonna be the same project.
Okay.
So just for clarification, so you know what's happening with that.
Just remind me.
Okay.
Okay.
Does that help you guys out? Anyway, to reiterate on what I was saying here, it's not a, you know, is this something we, this is something we have to do as mandated by our operating, our cup permit, so it's, we have to do it.
By what, which permit?
Our St. John's River Water Management District Cup Permit.
Consumption Use.
St. John's, what's it called?
St. John's River Water Management District Opera.
Consumption Use Permit.
Okay, Consumption Use, okay.
Cup, Consumption Use Permit.
Yeah.
We call it cup, that's what it stands.
There it is.
The other thing is, we were asking again this year, last year, we got that cut out, actually have a new vehicle, the truck that we do have, we have a Ranger that's over eighteen years old, apparently, and we're looking at replacing that with a new F-150. I'm not so sure that we have to go with the CNG, but at a cost of forty-three thousand. So we have an overall line budget, fifty-seven percent budget increase. And with that, any questions on Budget Thirty-One Eleven?
Just, you were hitting it there on Rosenbacher, I know on Martin, there was a terrible odor on Sunday, what was that? I mean, it was a sewer...
A terrible odor on Martin.
Yeah, I just noticed it driving through there, very bad.
I, to be honest with you, Commissioner, I did not hear anything about it.
Yeah, was there any, did anyone call it in? I'm surprised if they didn't.
Is that on Martin Road?
On, just driving on Martin Road, there was a terrible odor on Martin.
Oh, by the...
On Martin, yeah. And then when we hit up...
That's Martin or Martin?
Martin.
Martin, oh, by the school?
Martin, yeah, by the high school.
Remember, we had that, we had...
We had that one time before, the mayor had, and we went and done an investigation over there. Now, there is a lift station that's back, what's that lift station?
You see, there's a lift station.
By the high school and the coal factory.
Those, those trees.
Yeah, Martin.
That's the lift station, without generating many orders. Yeah. Just wondered if it had to do with Rosenbacher or what, but it was...
Well, remember, you went and changed the lid, right?
On the main pole right there, that's the only thing that's in that area, so main pole right in the intersection, so it's all the same as to, to kind of minimum...
Can you go back and, let's check around a little bit again?
Yeah, I remember before Mayor had, we went over and looked.
Stacy, my assistant, she complained twice, and so that's third time.
And there is a wooded area that's right there across from there, I think we've had a, I don't know, Chief McKinley, I think they kind of surveyed that area to look and see if they may find out there.
It seemed like sewer gases.
Yeah, yeah, not that we're aware of, Commissioner, I mean, I didn't, I didn't get a receipt of a call on that. Okay, moving next, we're gonna move to Budget Line Thirty-One Twenty-One, our wastewater treatment plant and the water reclamation facility. Facilities operated, one wastewater treatment plant, I'm sure you all know all about that. We have four reclaimed water treatment plants, we moved up from three to four, four being the Golden Gem, as you heard Vladimir speaking on, a three hundred million gallon storage pond that we have. Activities and programs managed, treatment of domestic wastewater, the distribution of reclaimed water, boy, don't take that one lightly, it's a challenge, it is a challenge, but we're able to manage, and we're, we got a good group of men and women that do a good job. One of the positions you see here is environmental compliance program, environmental compliance officer we have now. As you remember, last year, we talked about outsourcing the lab, we have moved forward with that, and we have allocated that person toward, as an environmental compliance officer. We have industrial pretreatment program, and we have a person in that position, and we also, with one of the positions that we had, the lab outsources, we're using now, is what you see as a fats, oil, and grease fog program. That is something we didn't have before, it's something that DEP highly recommends we have, and the reason being, if we don't have that, we have an oil and grease management program here. If we're not being proactive in doing that, you'll see here a little later in the slides what happens, and why we're where we're at today. So I'm really happy that we do have that position now, and moving forward, we'll be...
Which position is that?
That is the fats, oil, and grease fog program.
Oh, I see, because you said gre, I didn't hear grease.
Fog stands for fats, oil, and grease, that's...
Fats, oil, and grease?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and we don't have anyone?
No, ma'am, we haven't, but we are now, moving forward.
We do now.
And what we'll do is, we'll have an oil and grease management program, that means someone to be out there, all the restaurants, we get on an oil and grease management program, if not, we'll have someone to be proactive out there checking those grease interceptors, making sure that they are being pumped, making sure that people are doing the job they're supposed to. The way it is now, you know, we're just dependent upon the haulers or the restaurants just sending a manifest saying that it's been pumped, or maybe you get it, maybe you don't, but we have no one that's been allocated to that position. The end result is, as you know, what's gonna happen, the end result is, you're gonna see it at your plant. If it's not taken care of upstream, then, you know, and let's face it...
Where were they disposing their...
Where would they dispose of their grease?
Yeah.
Right down the sink. I mean, our grease, well, what happened, they have a grease interceptor that's there.
Right.
So what will happen is, if the grease interceptor's not being pumped, as it should be, and we usually have them on a sixty-day program based on, you know, their seeding, flow rates and all that, and if they're not pumping that, so eventually, what's gonna happen is, it's gonna work its way through the system and end up, you know, in the lift stations and end up at your plant, so...
Oh, that's interesting, I didn't know that.
And one thing, I will tell you this, our microorganisms, or as you wanna call it, bugs, there is no microorganism that break down grease, that's on grease, it has to be dealt with manually removed, so...
Great, great for white, what's that called?
Yes, so...
That's interesting.
So yeah, it's very, very important, and you'll see here in a minute. Personnel, we have a four point eight percent budget increase, mainly that's due, again, to salaries, benefits, we have fourteen full-time employees last year, and we have fourteen this year. Again, you heard me mention the positions, one full-time employee is a Water Resource Operations Manager, that's a good guy, ten full-time employees, domestic wastewater treatment and reclaimed water distribution operators, one full-time employee for environmental coordinator, environmental compliance program, one full-time employee for environmental specialist, industrial pretreatment program, and then here you see that one position for the environmental specialist for the fats, oil, and grease fog program.
That's interesting.
So here we go. Supplies and other services, we have a thirty-five point four percent budget increase. Utility services, here we are again, thirty-two percent increase. You say, man, how can that be? You heard Vladimir speak earlier, the cost of trying to move this water, and we're moving it further out, I mean, where the ponds is, that, where we have the Golden Gem. We looked at it today, that's ten miles of transmission line from Cleveland Street to get it out there. Overall power bill went up about, was under budget about a hundred thousand dollars last year. We're predicting, we're thinking it's gonna, we're gonna see significant increase trying to push that water out there. So that's why you see the big increase of the four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, again, to have a real number, know where we're gonna be, probably be next year, once we fully operational pushing that water out there, so that's why we have that there. The other one is, you're looking at contractual services, a three hundred and eighty-three percent, that's a shocker, one of that thing is two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, you say, whoa, what is this? You heard me speak it to y'all a while ago on the grease, what it is. That number that you're seeing right there, that increase of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, is to remove that grease that's at our headworks, at our plant, twice a year is where we're at right now, that we're having to remove that. And again, if we don't do it, it's gonna end up in your plant, I mean, on downstream, and it's gonna cause more problems, DO problems, compliance issues, it has to be dealt with. So that's that number, that's what it is to have it pumped out or removed twice per year, is a two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
So then, this is always gonna show up every year for the budget?
Well, here's what we're hoping, we're hoping now that we have that oil and grease management program in place, and we're gonna have somebody that's gonna be proactive working... and we're gonna have somebody that's gonna be proactive working this system, that we're gonna see that, we hope at least half. And we're hoping eventually drop down, but we're not dealing with that. The, the reason you're seeing that here, let's face it, anybody out there restaurant, it's money, it costs them money to have that pump. If nobody's being and watching that, guess what, they're not gonna pump it, they don't care, they want you to deal with it, it's money in their pocket.
I mean, this is just an interesting element that I'm just learning. So with this new person online or onboard, he's going to go to the restaurants?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and inspect?
We have, yes, ma'am, we have an oil and grease management program.
Okay, but right now, the restaurants are kind of on their own best behavior, they're telling us that they've done it.
Yes, ma'am.
So now, if we find someone in violation, what happens?
So here's what we do, we can put on the oil and grease management program, if they're complying, that means if we come out there and say, okay, you're pumping every sixty days, we're checking, it's sufficient, grease trap's been pumped, we're getting manifest in, we're checking it off, we're making sure that, you know, you're, if they're doing that and they're staying up with it, then they're required to pay thirty dollars a month, that's a fee for them to be on the oil and grease management room and they're pumping, we come out and check. If they don't, and they're not, we put them what we call in a surcharge program. And then what happened is, we will come out, that person will come out and they will sample that grease trap based on the BOD, this is biochemical oxygen demand, what kind of demand it's gonna have on your plant. And there's a fee that we will charge the restaurant owner. It's way more significant than what it would be to be on that and being proactive taking care of it. So it's, there's a formula they have, it could, it could run, I've seen it as much as a thousand dollars on their sewer bill added for not pumping, so it gets their attention.
Okay.
So, so anyway, that's, that's where you're seeing that, the other one is miscellaneous charges. Sludge hauling has went up, there's a thirty-six percent increase there, or sixty-three thousand dollars. You know, we still, you know, that's just, that's just the cost of doing business, it's an increase, so. Vehicle maintenance, it's minimal, showing thirty-six percent, talking twenty-five hundred dollars. Operating supplies, hey, there's your decrease, ten thousand dollars, so. Capital outlay, we have an overall ninety-six thousand dollar budget, we budgeted for in the infrastructure. All that has to do with, as you can see, fifty thousand's allocated toward the ground storage tank for the coating and painting, at our wastewater treatment plant, we have one tank that we need to, to get up to with the coating and the painting on it. And then also, we have a forty-six thousand dollar number here, and that's for the Northwest replacement of the generator fuel tank, to remove and replace it, which is, is, is needed, so. Overall budget line, thirty-one twenty-one, you have a twenty-three point four percent budget increase. And I think that's it on that one, if you have any questions.
Let me ask you one question. If there's a businesses operating and they are selling food that they're not licensed to do, so therefore they don't have a grease trap, how, how do you detect that?
Okay, ask me that question one more time, so if a person, if I heard you correctly, you're saying, if they have a restaurant and they don't have a grease trap?
It, it, it's not supposed to be a restaurant.
Okay.
Working out of their home.
Working out of their home?
Well, or they may be working out of a business, doing something else, but also selling food on the side. So they don't have a grease trap.
You just need to give us that restaurant so we can.
It's a friend of his.
They're not. You know, again, I don't know if they got an operating license or, you know, went and pulled, I don't know, but I can tell you this. Each one that does, restaurants supposed to come and do business here in the city, they're gonna go to the building department, pull a permit. We receive that and we say, okay, based on the size of your restaurant, chairs, whatever you're gonna have in there, there's a certain size grease trap.
You're supposed to have.
That you got, supposed to have in place, yes, sir. There's some that still, the, that got grandfathered in is the under the sink, oh, we can't stand them, we wish we could do something about it, but some of those people are grandfathered in. And what they have is they have a grease trap, a small one under the sink, and what they do is they check off that they're, they're cleaning that under the sink and it's, it's, it's a mess. There's very few of them, and we're hoping eventually we have none of them, so.
So tell them first that you don't know that.
So the twenty-three point four budget increase, that's what, year over year, so basically what you have budgeted for this fiscal year versus what you're asking for for next year?
Yes, sir.
Is that right? Okay. And then, tell me a little bit, because looking at the year-to-date financials for our packet for tomorrow, like wastewater treatment plant is, if you annualize your current spend, you're only gonna spend like two point eight of the three point six. So is there, is there just stuff that's gonna happen in the next few months for wastewater treatment? Or do we feel like that's the right kind of level of budgeting that we need for this department?
Okay, you're, you're asking on which, which line?
So, so just wastewater treatment plant in general, right, the three-one-two-one line. It's a twenty-three percent budget increase year over year on paper, but in actual performance, on our financial statement that we have for tomorrow, provided by Vladimir, so you've spent about two point one million through June, so nine months of the fiscal year. So if I just straight line annualize that, it's like two point, two point seven, two point eight million, so you're almost gonna come in like eight hundred K light. So do you feel like you're gonna spend all of that money next year and be able to execute on that spend?
The, the reason I, I feel, the unknown is, I'll just tell you this, as you heard the mayor speak earlier too, we have had our neighbor municipalities work with us, I'm saying, we're bound by those contracts of taking that water, and that's one of the big things, distributing and trying to move that water. They have worked with us, we've, you know, we've had meetings with Frank Mars Altamont, we've met with all them. And they're to a point where they're saying, hey, look, we, you know, you guys are obligated to be taking this water. So I think the thing that I think is, is Commissioner Becker, I believe the utility service is gonna, I mean, I know what we put there, thirty-two percent, I'm not sure that that number ain't gonna be higher than that. I mean, again, I wish I had a crystal ball to know, but I don't know, but I do know this, we are bound by those contracts to be able to be, you know, to honor those.
Sure.
And so.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to identify areas where, you know, if we're not coming close to budget spend this year on one line item, you know, where there's flexibility, that's it. I mean, I was just trying to, because some departments, obviously, there's seasonality to your spend, I mean, you may have contracts that are getting ready to be executed in the next three months that are gonna bring that right closer to what your budgeted amount is, I don't know, I'm just, I'm oversimplifying the financial report that was provided to us, so. I just, I was just curious.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, we're gonna move on. One more. We're gonna move to Budget Number Thirty-One Ninety-One, utility plants maintenance. Facilities maintain, five water treatment plants, one wastewater treatment plant, four reclaimed water treatment plants. Activities and programs managed, preventative and corrective utility plant maintenance. Computerized maintenance management system, CMMS, and supervisory control and data acquisition, that's SCADA. Personnel, we have a five point one percent budget increase. We have nine full-time employees last year, we're carrying nine full-time employees this year. We have one full-time employee for maintenance supervisor, two full-time employee electricians, two full-time employees instrumentation technicians, two full-time employees utility plant mechanics, and two full-time employees maintenance worker. I cannot just tell you guys how happy I am for those two maintenance workers. I know Edward worked hard last year to be able to put those in our budget. One of the things is, is, you know, if you look at our, our plants and stuff and doing, and I think we're doing a lot better job this year, we have allocated and put those people where they're doing the mowing and stuff. One of the things that we have to do when you're talking about the water treatment plant and especially the wastewater plant, and you look at that sixty acres we have there, one of the jobs, we have a permitted spray field there. One of the things of your permit is that has to be maintained, it has to be mowed. So before, we were really struggling in this area, and what we were doing is we were having to pull licensed operators off of their job, it's, you know, very important to be able to do it, to go out there and try to mow. And, and now that we've added those two, I don't know if any of you went by and seen the wastewater treatment plant and the way it looks, but please go by and look. We made a big difference, you know, there was sixty-five million dollars spent there. We wanted to look nice and upkeep it, and they're doing a good job, so I'm very thankful for that. Supplies and other services, we have a five point three percent budget increase. Contractual services, let me just turn to that, you're gonna see, it's a little misleading, it says a hundred percent increase. That's because we didn't have that at all last year. We, one of the things we, as you know now, we have a new SCADA system, VT SCADA. Maybe you do, maybe you don't, but it's one of the state-of-the-art controls that we have. One of the things that's, that's so good about that is we were able to go to DEP and reduce the manpower we have, then go from a twenty-four hour operations down to sixteen. And you know, that, because of this automated system we have. What it will do is, you could control pumps, operational from, from home, per se, you can, and an operator will get a call and be able to know what to do, he can log in and can control there. So it gives us that, that flexibility there. But one of the things that we, we found out in this past year is, of course, we have two great guys, our instrumentation techs, but they're limited to some of the things they can do far as integrating and putting stuff together. And so we would need a service contract for troubleshooting and support for those guys. And that's what you see in this, this price here of twenty thousand, that's what that gives us. It gives us service that our staff can reach out and to help with updating and doing graphical changes that need to be done and stuff, so. Operating supplies, again, it's, you're showing twenty-five percent, we're talking eleven thousand dollars. Repair and maintenance, eight thousand dollar decrease. And communication service, we took that out, because we, like I say, we have that up there, our contractual services. Capital outlay, we have a hundred and seventeen thousand dollar budget there. Again, that's, one thing is for, we're short a truck there, in our maintenance division, they're having to share. So we, we do need a, a truck there. And then, one of the things the guys, there's these thermal engine, imaging inspection cameras. They just feel like these things, they've done their homework and do, they feel like this will be really instrumental in being proactive and finding problems before they come a big problem. So I know that fifteen thousand dollars is a lot of money, nothing to sneeze at, but I do think that it will be something that we can use that will help us, you know, to be able to find a problem before it becomes a bigger problem, especially when you're talking about, you know, compliance issues and stuff, so. And we did put fifty-nine thousand dollars toward SCADA RTU cabinet replacement. That's our cabinets for, that we're rebuilding and putting communication in, so we have our, our instrumentation techs, they work on building those cabinets and doing. So we allocated fifty-nine thousand dollars toward that. And the overall line budget's a seven percent budget increase. And I think that is it. Any questions?
All right, George?
Okay. This is now.
Good evening, name is George Garcia, I'm gonna be presenting utility water maintenance, or the water maintenance budgets and wastewater maintenance budget. So, on our water maintenance budget, this is the activities and programs that we perform, which is the water meter maintenance program. You have new installations, repairs, and, you know, troubleshooting, whatever the issues may be. Got a cross connection control program, you have hydrant maintenance program, and you got utilities that we need to locate, so that way nobody hits them. At the same time, we repairing utilities, and every time we complete a repair, we also performing all the restoration. Either contracting it out or doing it ourselves, whatever, we can perform in-house. Following that, we have, we had twenty-one employees last year, and this year we are gonna keep it the same. Granted, we just sent over to HR to post a cross connection coordinator position. So we reclassified one of the positions to be able to obtain that. We feel like it's necessary to have somebody there that manages that our program full-time. You know, speaking to other municipalities, seeing how they run the program. Sixty percent of the work, it's office work, which is just managing the inventory, uploading test reports that they received, and sending out letters and, and following up on, on those letters if nobody responds at that time.
Can you just go back one, just, you know, because again, I, I think I could speak for all of us up here, I think the thing that we get communicated with the most, most frequently, is related to the backflow and cross connection devices. So during your presentation, just guide us through how, how you plan to address that issue. Do you, are, are you asking for the proper funding to run a very straightforward, practical, logical program around those devices? That we all feel comfortable that if we ever get asked, or we continue to get communications on this topic, we're well versed on how the city is addressing that issue and taking it forward?
This is gonna, it's putting us closer where we wanna be. You know, you need a guy or a person there to have a full-time management of the program. The way our ordinance is written for any backflow device, the consumer bears the ownership, they gotta do the maintenance and testing. Going through this rate study, and to be able to fund it, if we wanna take ownership, you gotta be able to fund it. Once the rate study comes back and they give us those numbers, then we, at that point, we can determine if we wanna take ownership of just the residential backflow devices. At this moment, the way it's written, all we have to do is send out notifications that your backflow is due.
But, but if someone doesn't send that back, and, like, what's, I brought this up in a meeting, a couple of meetings ago. If, absent that, because I guarantee you, backflow prevention devices aren't on the vernacular of most of the residents in the city of Popka. And if, if the city's not, if there's no punitive nature of making sure that that gets done properly, what? And I know that there was conversations that there may be changes to the ordinance, I just didn't know what impact, I just wanna make sure that whatever ordinance, plan, ordinance changes are in the works, that there's funding available for this to make sure that we have a very robust program around.
The way we're funded right now is, is just to be able to do the new installs and also do the repair maintenance of the backflows that we own. And that's the way we're funded. Going through the rate study, if we wanna take ownership of the residential, then at that point, then you have to increase your funding, because it's gonna increase the, the amount of devices or assemblies that you gonna have to maintain. Having a person there to continue to build our inventory, continue to clean up the inventory, because we have the, the system in place. We have a software management in place, we have a manual, but we're updating our manual. And we collected, or we asked for other municipalities to share their manual with us, and they're all been willing to help us out. So that, at that point, we can borrow ideas from this municipality, that municipality, so that way we can have a manual that's gonna, we're gonna have for years to come.
Yeah, and apologies for my own cloudiness on all the process, but if, at some time before, the city had the responsibility of going out and checking backflow devices, correct?
Uh, no, we never had that, we, we did the new installations, as we did the installations, at that point, the backflow needed to be tested. And the way we are addressing that now, we are installing residential dual checks. Those are, only need to be replaced every five years, but you can only install those where the only hazard is reclaimed water. So as you installing those, you do. So as you installing those, you do, you perform a cross-connection inspection to determine that, uh, your potable water and your reclaimed water are two separate systems. And those, uh, are being performed as well. So we're keeping record of that, and, and that's something that, uh, we're working hard to put a, a plan in place to be able to supply those records as needed. And yes, we have a, uh, software management, but you gotta also maintain it. You can't just have it and, and don't keep, do the upkeep. And like I said, it's, um, sixty percent of what, uh, of the work on cross-connection is keeping, uh, doing the upkeep, and dealing with customers, and sending out letters, and constantly, you know, um, managing your software.
Software, like, I'm confused on the software side of it. What's the software tracking?
It's, uh, you upload all your tests. It, uh, lets you know when your notices are due. And so at that point, you send out your notices, and then there is a procedure. If they don't respond within a month, at that point, then you send out another notice. And then, you know, you then, you do have to make physical contact.
Okay, so let, let me run through the scenario just to make sure that we're completely aligned, because I'm saying this more for my benefit than yours. So I've just built my home in Apopka. City does the initial kind of test to make sure you, you, they're not co-mingling reclaim with potable and backflow prevention devices in place. A year goes by, I, Kyle, homeowner, and then responsible for testing my own backflow devices. You are saying in the software, you've already cataloged when I built my home. You can put in your software that a year from now, I'm due for my backflow certification to provide to the city to prove that I've done that. If I don't do that within a year, you send out dunning letters, whatever, that say, hey, you're due. If thirty days go by, I still haven't provided to it, you send another letter to make sure that, is, is that generally the kind of use case?
And, uh, we're building our manual to be able to have all that in place. I mean, everybody nowadays is going digital with everything. So you gotta have a person there after the second letter. You gotta make physical contact or do, uh, a door hanger, because if you get a bill, or if you get a letter, if it's not a bill...
Right, and so I guess, I guess the ultimate, if I, again, Kyle homeowner, just say, you know what? I don't feel like doing it, and I never will. What's the actual recourse that the city will take if that person becomes very significantly delinquent?
Disconnect the water service.
We are, but nobody does it. I mean, it's not...
But, but, that's what I'm saying, though. I mean, if, if we feel like there's a critical need to have backflow devices checked, and we rely on homeowners to do it, yet we don't hold them to that task, what's the point of having that? I just wanna make sure that...
Speaking with other municipalities, they'll, they all have the same challenges. You know, uh, one scenario is that they go over a year before they able even to make the attempt to go out there and disconnect a service, because it takes that long of a process to, you know, get to that point.
Yeah, I...
Yes, it's, uh, it's, it's critical, and we all continue to talk with DEP to make sure that we're taking the proper steps to get us where we need to be. And as of now, they have yet to say that we, we're doing anything that we're not supposed to. We're, we're doing the, we're taking the steps necessary to get us to that point.
One of the things that we're gonna do in the rate study is we'll have the, that will be a part of the rate study, but one of the things that we could do, which is what Orange County does, and there's nobody else in the central Florida area, who does? Right, right. Orange County, they just charge every homeowner three dollars a month, and that's, so that every five years, they just replace your, and they just put you on a, on a... So anyway, but that, that's...
But conceptually, that, that's how you force the act.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, you take ownership.
You can either send a, two letters and whatever and, and call it a day, or you can charge everybody three dollars a month and know that every five years, they're gonna get their...
And again, Commissioner Becker, the thing is, if we have to decide in Apopka, if that's the will of the government, then...
Yep.
Because right now, the governor, the state DEP says, you know, it's our requirement to make sure that we are sending those notices to Kyle Becker that he is, goes ahead. And then, like you said, I mean, I know what you're saying, well, what's the repercussions? Well, the way the ordinance is, we can shut your water off.
Yeah, it's, it's two sides of the coin. The repercussion to the homeowner, and then the repercussion to the overall water system at large, right? So if, if, if it's detrimental, we feel, feel it's critical to make sure that we are fully protecting our water supply, and we all are head nodding to that one, then yes, we need to take drastic measure to say, okay, this one, we need to, on the homeowner front, make sure that that's happening. Because if we just sit there and just say, homeowner, take care of it, we've got fifty-three thousand, fifty-three thousand people in the city that, that's not top of mind, and I can guarantee you that, so.
No, we definitely, and this person is gonna definitely help us and sets us forward in the direction where we have a full-time employee. That's what they do. Right now, we, we do have a foreman that's, along, myself, we're working on sending out letters, receiving those letters, and, again, you know, you gotta be able to follow up on those letters, and it just takes a lot of time and effort to be able to, if you send a thousand letters, you know, how many of those responded? How many of those actually called in to say, hey, I received a letter? Or how many of those didn't even make a, an attempt to call the city?
Well, I mean, in that case, to save, save mailings, I would just add it as part of our normal utility billing. I mean, yeah.
And, you know, with the rate, rate study is gonna determine how much do, do we need to charge the customer to be able to fund that? And at that point, yeah, we'll, we'll take ownership. If we decided to go that route, we take ownership and we make sure it's getting done. But, you know, it, it comes with other issues. You know, we take ownership, at that point, I tell you, you know, you have a backflow device that's underground. We no longer want that backflow device underground, we want it above ground, so that way we can properly do the maintenance on it. How many people are gonna want that device above grounds? You know, where everything, they like it to be, you know, aesthetic.
Let me ask you, the, the backflow letters that you're talking about, this, what residents are getting that? I, I mean, I'm talking about me as a resident. I never got a letter telling me to check the backflow.
We, uh, right now, our, our focus has been to do all the commercials.
Okay, that's the letter that I gave you.
And I, and I make contact with the person. They actually had already performed a test, so they're, they're up to date with their, uh, testing, and they're sending that over to us, so...
So the residents haven't received the letter?
No, and, uh, we're looking at several ideas on how we can start doing that. But, you know, you, you gotta have somebody there that takes the calls and, or makes those house business, so that way you can explain to them what a backflow device or assembly is, you know? And I think, uh, that's what we're working here, to be able to, be able to do, or to be able to do that, you know, and give the customers what they need, you know, uh, education on what an assembly does, and what it looks like and where it needs to be, so...
Does the average homeowner even have an idea how to test their backflow prevent...
And you gotta be a certified tester to be able to do that.
So, so we're expecting a homeowner to get a certified tester to come in?
And they're, they're not that expensive. To test it is not that expensive, not to repair it, that's where your fees, uh, go up. But most devices, or every device does not need to be replaced. It's all repair and testing. But, uh, they do need to be, um, repair at times.
So if a resident were to call the city and say, I wanna get my backflow tested, I don't know who to contact, do we have a list of...
We're, we're getting a list now, and we, matter of fact, we're gonna have them, yeah, we'll have them checked.
Yes, definitely. It's not, it's, it's not a list of, that you recommend, and it's a list that you, we, we determined that they are qualified and certified to be able to complete the test.
And what is the average cost of one of these tests?
It's thirty-five, around thirty-five dollars for residential, more or less, and then for commercial, it increases, but...
And is that thirty-five regardless whether it's underground or above ground?
It's thirty-five dollars, yeah, it is to test, to test the device. But if it needs repairs, of course, they're gonna, at that point, let you know a, so the price can increase by a lot depending on the repair that is needed.
That's interesting. Something else I just learned today. Okay.
Uh, supplies and other services, uh, we increased the census metering by a lot. And the reason being, this year, we have been, our primary focus have been on the zero and estimated read, uh, meters that we have out there. We have a contractor in the city right now helping us bring that number down. Once they help us bring that number down, then at that point, we'll be able to manage, uh, any new meter that comes, uh, that goes, that no, is no longer reading. And for next year, what we wanna do is update our older meters. So we going from a mechanical meter to a, uh, electronic meter, which is more accurate, and which generates more revenue for the city. So that's our goal, to, uh, continue to get, have the contractor come in and continue to update our metering system.
So we're actually putting ourselves on some sort of rotating maintenance program? Because I remember when they blanketed the city with all these new meters, but then we didn't have...
Well, we did, when it...
We didn't have a maintenance.
What was done at the beginning, it was when they, we went to, uh, the, our, um, the electronic read.
Right.
You, you replaced the register, but not the actual meter. So the meter was still a, uh, mechanical meter, and just the register was replaced. Now we're updating the entire meter, where you removing the mechanical parts out of it, and you're installing a electronic meter, which there's no moving parts. So, you know, it, it, you know, it doesn't reduce your pressure, it doesn't have anything to clog it up, so it, and it lasts a lot longer, and it's more accurate.
How long will that take? What's the, you know, to replace all the meters in the city? What's the, a year, two years?
What I was doing, it was gonna take a long time, so that's why we are bringing a contractor in place. I have a chart here to...
Is that program starting anytime soon?
We're, we're, right now, we're working on the zero read and estimated, uh, report, which is every meter out there that is not actually sending a, a reading back to the utility billing. So we're working on those to get that list to where it's manageable by, uh, city employees. And then next year, we're gonna start working on the older meters.
So now, when you find a meter that's not being read, are we notifying that resident that their meter is not being read, whether it's commercial or residential?
If we find it, our guys, uh, will replace it and update it. And, uh, we do have door hangers that will even say that your meter has been replaced, and your bill may go increase due to the, that...
But other than when you're going physically out to replace the meter, that resident or commercial owner does not know that their meter was not being read beforehand?
Uh, no, because they, they, they still get a bill, they still get a bill, so you know, the tech, uh, I don't know how...
It would say estimated on their bill.
Okay.
So, so their bill, if they're, if, if it says estimated on the front of the bill, then that means their bill was estimated for that month. So they have a process where if it's estimated for several months consecutively, then that's when it triggers that they'll visit the meter, or either change the meter, or do what they need to do to fix the meter.
Okay.
So, so you, if you're getting an estimate, you're either gonna get an actual read, you're gonna get estimated, or you're gonna get a zero read. So if you get a zero read, there's no consumption or no change, they have the same thing. They'll wait a couple of months, make sure the person's not maybe on vacation, or, or just have it turn, has the meter turned off, before they visit it to, to realize if they need to change the meter. But at that time is when they let them know, we've changed your meter. There could be, you could have an increased bill, um, in the future, because we've changed you out to a new meter. So, so that's how they communicate it out to...
Okay.
Glad on those, on the contract we have with that Water Inc., are we raised any money in that, you think, so far?
Water Office of America?
Yeah, Water Office of America.
We had a, we had a company that came in to, uh, help us find, um, unaccounted water. So they have, they went through our utility billing system, they went out in the field, and they actually found, uh, a lot of areas where either we were not charging correctly, or we were, the meter was not programmed correctly, where it was accounting for the right gallon. So they have been able to find, uh, more money that we can generate.
I think we're what, we're at almost five-hundred-thousand dollars now in, in uncollected water revenue, so...
And that will show in your rate study.
Yeah.
So the rate study people will show you that when they bring all their study and do the, present you, to you the full study.
All right, uh, so this is where you'll see the, our backflows. Uh, so again, this is based on the back, the new installations, and also the repair maintenance on the backflows that, uh, we own, which will be, uh, list stations and, uh, city facilities. So based on the rate study, at that point, then, you know, that, that may change if we decide to take ownership of all the residential. We don't wanna take ownership of the commercial, but, you know, just the residential, if we decide that. Capital outlay, uh, Vladimir hit a, on a couple of them, but, um, we have a hundred thousand for rehabilitation and replacement of water mains. And also, um, you know, updating the asbestos cement pipe, uh, the cast iron and so forth, so that way we can get a, have a better water main system out there.
What's the oldest part of our city that you are replacing the water pipes? Like, which is the oldest part in our city?
Well, right, our focus here is the asbestos pipe and, uh, all that. So it's spread out through the city, I mean, but, you know, generally it's around, you know, Park Avenue area, but it, it is, uh, you know, we have a list together, uh, our Mike, our GIS guy, has put all that into a map, so we know where all those locations are, and we, you know, and then, we do gotta build a plan, so, so that way, uh, we can then get it contracted out and then start replacing those pipes.
So will that be in conjunction with, if we go out to, we're having the streets assessment that's gonna tell us where our streets need to be, uh, replaced, resurfaced, or whatever? We're not gonna go back, because I'm, I've seen this done, after we do all that work, and then dig it up to replace a...
We, we try to work together and do, you, you know, update as much as we can. Do you update or take care of your sewer line? Because that's the first thing that's gonna create any voids on the, on the road.
So if we get the streets assessment that says, let's take one street, um, uh, what's the street up by Shopkey Lester that everybody says needs to be...
Yawther's Road.
Yawther's. And then we find out that there needs to be replacement of the water pipes or the water lines there.
Those are fairly, those are fairly new.
Oh, those are fairly new?
Those are fairly new.
Okay, so I'm using, but anyway, if, if we find that there's a street that needs to get the water lines, and then there's a street that is a priority to fix, will that get moved up until we can do the water pipes?
Actually, Commissioner, so when we get the study back that shows us the assessment of the roads...
Right.
For, let's say, for example, Yawther's Road comes back as number one, we all kinda think it probably will, but let's say that comes back as number one, and say we had a, a structural problem, we had a pipe problem underneath the road. Before we paved that road, we would fix that pipe. So we would, we would, we would make sure that, you know, and we did that on Vic Road, if you recall. On Vic Road, we had several places where we had to replace the piping underneath the road before we resurfaced it.
Okay.
And so that, definitely, we would do that. So they'll come back, they're gonna come back and just tell you the assessment of the roads. They're not gonna tell you the piping underground. Our guys have the age and the way, and the, the, the information on the pipe. So they'll work together when we decide to do resurfacing and make sure that, that we've, make sure everything underground is secure and good before we resurface it, so we don't have problems later.
All right, and, uh, equipment, we are replacing, uh, old Ranger, you know, we did a, uh, we do have a list on our aging, uh, vehicles, and we're replacing one of the older Rangers. Just to have a, a vehicle that is, that we can carry and be able to do repairs as, as needed. Right now, we're working out F-one-fifties and stuff, and it's, at times, it makes it difficult to have, um, everything that you need to be able to perform certain repairs. So that's the reason for, uh, F-two-fifty. And overall, we do have a budget increase of thirty-eight-point-seven percent.
Yeah, that was one of my questions, it's going from the Ranger to the two-fifty. So you just can't rig it properly with what you need?
No, and, you know, air, we always have it at Fleet, and, you know, it, the amount of stuff that you're carrying, you know, you know, it wears them down quicker, and you just can't carry stuff. So the guys are constantly coming back and forth, you know, it's just time, we gotta, we need to be more efficient and have the stuff that we need on the trucks. All right, our next, uh, budget is, uh, thirty-one-seventy-one wastewater maintenance. All right, our next budget is thirty-one seventy-one wastewater maintenance. Activities and programs managing there is sewer lift stations program, generator inspection program, order control program, sewer pipe inspection, sewer pipe cleanings and manholes. And, you know, they also do new service for new homes. Again, you know, order control, that's what, you know, you brought up for lift stations. We put in a lot of money for rentals for those order control scrubbers and also chemicals. They need to be able to work together and you gotta have them set in the right places. But at the same time, it's a lot of money. Chemical, you know, you're using two types of different chemicals and they're very expensive and you're pretty much just flushing money down the toilet. But it's to help, you know, keep the orders as low as possible. Personnel, we have seventeen full-time employees. This year, we have the same. You know, it's, it is split up in two separate groups. One that strictly deals with lift stations and the other one with the collection system, which will be gravity sewer lines and manholes that you see on the road. Next line is supply and other services. We got a seven point two budget increase. And with this, utility services, let me check that line real quick. That's due to the power bills for the lift stations. We have a hundred and forty-eight lift stations that, and as we increase, we still got more coming in. So that increase is due to the power bills. Capital Outlay, you have a one point seven five budget. Again, that's what Vlad hit on, is on the lift station, the renewal program that we want to do. We want to start with lift station seventeen. And next, we will move to lift station on Seventy Seven, which is on Bradshaw. And, you know, you mentioned the order that comes out of it. We're limited right now because of the space. You know, we can benefit from a bigger scrubber, so that way we can, that order scrubber can be more efficient. But right now, the way we're battling that is replacing the carbon more often, which is the polisher that is on top. So, you know, as it starts to age, then you'll get some gases that may escape every now and then. So then you, the company will come in there and replace the carbon on top. And then we do have other sewer mains that we may need to replace and rehabilitate. Sewer lining is in here as well. And that goes in conjunction with the roads that get resurfaced. We want to make sure that we line them before we do any resurfacing. Equipment and, you know, there's mobile generators. With the lift stations, you need to be able to, power outages, you gotta be able to have enough generators to, you know, go around and pump them down until Duke Energy restores power through hurricane and through just a storm that we get in every, you know, every week. So then the replacement of sewer lift station pumps. You know, it's just, you know, they go bad or they were down. So you do have to replace several every now and then. And overall, we do have a budget increase of twenty-one point four.
Any questions for George?
I just have one in reference to the personnel budget increase.
Okay.
It's only at two point eight.
I think it's just salaries and all that.
Well, I mean, I was looking at all the others and they was like four and five, and so I was wondering why that one was so low.
Yeah, Commissioner, it depends on positions that, if you've had people retire, and I think George has had some people in this group and some of his groups that have retired. So what happens is you have a senior person that retired, they're high in the pay band, and then somebody new comes on and they are lower in the pay band, you have a difference there.
All right.
Are we replacing the director that left Public Services? Is that?
That is on our list of things to do, yes, Commissioner, absolutely.
Yeah, they're tired of seeing me down there. All right, last but not least, Josh.
No, that's at the end.
Josh, we need to let you go first next year.
As y'all know, we do twice a week residential garbage, once a week yard trash and bulky pickup, and every other week recycling, as well as the commercial garbage pickup. We have, I'm asking for one additional operator. We've, we will have added about three thousand tons per year collected next year, and that's about what a truck and a driver can pick up in a year's time, so it's time to add. We're maintaining their hours at a reasonable level, we're maintaining morale. I keep tabs of the customer complaint ratios. We've held them steady at an acceptable level. We're not perfect, but it's at a ninety-nine percent satisfaction, so we do our best there. And, yeah, the disposal rates, they are what they are. So I think, I think we've got a good, steady program. Our average age of fleet is about five and a half years. The average life expectancy of our whole fleet is about ten and a half years. So y'all have done a good job giving us the equipment to keep that at a reasonable level. So, yeah, I think we're doing good there. We've made a lot of progress there in the last two or three years.
How are we doing with the recyclables? Are we, are we getting better as residents in recycling and not mixing garbage with the recyclables? Or putting in the proper products that they need to put in the recyclables? How are we doing with that?
I really don't know. I, we did, we got a grant last year and we started, we did some inspections. We actually hired a contractor that came in and checked all the cans ahead of us. And it showed pretty poor compliance to start with, but gradually improved over the four-week cycle that we did each one of those neighborhoods. And so that, that helps. And we've tried to increase within our budget constraints, public information, you know, a few more frequent mailings with the bills, utility bill and on Facebook and whatnot. And we went through a bad period of rejected loads from the processor. And I'm not convinced that it's all how dirty the material is. I think it's a lot more market-driven, because since we've started sending it just this past, since June, the rejection levels have, you know, went back to almost zero. So I don't know what's going on there. But we, but we do need to keep, whether we get it rejected or we don't, it needs to be the right stuff in there, right? It needs to be recyclable, not garbage or other things. So that'll continue to be our focus, you know, to help improve that through public information. And we had, that was some of the things in my wish list that we decided to hold off on a little while. I think community development's gonna start the Keep America Beautiful program. And I think that could be, you know, a group effort there to put together a little more comprehensive plan on beautifying the city as well as improving our recycling program. So I think we decided to hold off on spending some of that money, give us a year with that program to see what we can come up with, so. But we do good, I mean, we do, we've got a really good program. It could be, we could do more, we could recycle a higher percentage, but it's a wacky dynamic right now where it costs so much more to recycle. And with people putting in dirty recycling, it's like you gotta kind of ease into the, to the process to try to... You don't want to try to increase recycling too much right, right now under this climate. It'll improve if it's simple. It's, in my career, it's just been up and down, you know. I think we're about to come out of a bad cycle and the values will improve and it'll be a lot easier to recycle, a lot easier to push recycling. It'd be a lot more financial incentive to recycle, so it'll get better. So, yeah, the cost, mostly, I just need people, trucks and a place to dump the trash. And that drives what, what most of my cost changes here are. The contractual services, we did bump that up a little bit to augment our truck cleaning and compactor cleaning program. Utility services, that's the disposal cost, that's just rate increases and increases from garbage because of the growth of the city. Vehicle maintenance, that actually is a little low. We did increase that number from what you've got in your budget there. After talking with Charlie, we did take a pretty good little increase during COVID and since for the cost of anything steel, you know, so truck parts, you know, dumpster parts, all that, that really went up. So we had to bump that up a little bit more. Temp labor, that's mostly rate increase. And then fuel, we've, it went down. We've actually gotten a little more comfortable with projecting the price of the CNG. And we've also realized almost a complete switch over to CNG with all of our trucks. We just have a few that aren't CNG. So we're budgeting what's, you know, been the case really, I guess, in the past couple of years. And capital outlay, we would just want to buy another truck to go with that additional driver for the route. And we're on plan with, as far as the replacement cycle of our trucks. We just, it's time to add the automated trucks, so that's the one we're adding this year. Which last year, we added two, there were replacements, so it made it look like we went down in budget.
How many trucks do we have out there now? How many trucks does the fleet have to serve the city right now?
We've got about twenty-five different type trucks. I think it's like nineteen, you know, collection route trucks, the big trucks. We have, we launch, well, with adding that next one, we will be launching, if we add the additional route, seventeen routes a day is what we launch.
You have seventeen routes a day?
Yeah.
Five days a week?
It varies a little bit, on average, yeah, seventeen a day. And then, then we have about two people worth of PTO that we gotta burn every, every week. So hence the... I'm sorry, fifteen routes, seventeen heads because of the two that are on vacation. Yeah, so fifteen routes a day.
Oh, fifteen routes a day?
And that's really it, unless you have questions.
Any questions?
No, I mean, the only, just feedback. I mean, every time I interact with your staff, when they're around my house, whether it be yard pickup or just general trash service, I mean, top-notch.
Absolutely, yeah. We've, I've really tried to make that important when it comes to valuation time. And we talk about the value and how much they're hounding on you guys at the League of Cities to these private haulers. And I've been preaching that ever since I got here, and so I'm glad to hear that.
Two a day and in-house.
Yeah, and I'd just like to commend the department. I mean, we value all of our departments, but probably have more conversations about sanitation among our citizens than anything else, and they are really appreciative to the job that you do and the fact that we are collecting trash twice a week and that we have a mandatory pickup day on Tuesdays. When they talk to their other counterparts that don't live inside the City of Apopka, they just flaunt and they praise our sanitation department.
Thank you, that's good to hear, and I'll definitely let the guys. That point oh one percent that we deal with all day long is like all there is, you know. So we forget sometimes there's that other ninety-nine percent, so thank you.
Commissioners, one thing I wanted to point out here that, that we, and Josh should have mentioned this or probably would have, but he also is proposing a rate increase. So in order, as we grow, cost of garbage, everything is changing, whatever, he's proposing a three percent increase across the board to everybody, residential and commercial, for the upcoming fiscal year. So that's included in to get his budget where it is.
And I think we, we'll have, I think he's got the reports showing us we're still the low end of...
We're still the low end of the average rates for this region, and we're still, we need to bump it up to keep it in the black, you know, so...
Yeah, thank you, Josh.
I don't think our citizens will complain.
All right, well, thanks Vlad and the team for putting everything together tonight. Thanks, Edward. Any last thoughts? Not, we'll close the...